Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Thank you. I expect Mayor Pro Tem Ashby momentarily. Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chenier.
Here.
Councilmember Geta.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Good afternoon to everyone. I will lead us today in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon, everyone, to my colleagues, to the city staff, and to the members of the public. We are meeting once again by Zoom. Hopefully, that will not last a whole lot longer, as we hope to come back together in person soon after the scheduled summer recess. Let us begin with a special presentation, and I want to turn it over to Councilmember Harris for that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd have to say it's a real honor for me to do the special presentation for our Public Works Engineering Manager, Nader Kamal. It's really kind of bittersweet. Nader is just a tremendous employee, has done an awful lot for the city. He's retiring after 31 years of service in the city of Sacramento. He began in 1990. He's promoted through the ranks to Engineering Manager, and he's led the Engineering Services Division of Public Works with approximately 90 employees. He's worked on all kinds of projects. He worked on the Tower Bridge, rail yards access by pushing 7th Street through to Richards Boulevard. He's worked on major interchanges and bridges. So his list of accomplishments are great. He's been recognized 22 times by the American Society for Civil Engineers. You know, I could talk for a half hour about his accomplishments, but actually, what I want to talk about is the person. You know, when we have an employee who inspires everybody who works for him or her, it's pretty awesome, and that is the person that Nader is. I can tell you that there have been many projects in District 3 that he has assisted me with, and every time he comes into my office, it's like a breath of fresh air. He's just, you know, an outstanding individual, an outstanding engineer. His staff is going to miss him. I'm going to miss him. I would hazard a guess that if you have ever worked with him or had him in your office, you're going to miss him too. Of course, Nader, when you leave, it opens the door for some young brilliant mind to come and fill your space. But people like you are hard to come by, you know, somebody who is a leader, an excellent engineer, a manager. Your skill set is pretty deep, and you have left a lot of great projects here in the city. I know that for the rest of your days, anytime you travel around Sacramento, you can say, "I had a big part in that project." They're everywhere. They're all over the city. I just wanted to tell you that I personally appreciate you, and I know that the city appreciates you very, very much. And, you know, frankly, I'm very sorry to see you go, but I'm going to read the last stanza here. "Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Sacramento that we do hereby recognize Nader Kamal on the occasion of his retirement from the city of Sacramento service and do hereby express our sincere appreciation for his efforts and highly commend him for the manner in which he has carried out his duties and responsibilities of his position and do further extend best wishes for fulfilling and rewarding retirement." That being said, I tried to snag him for an extra nine months, and I was unsuccessful. You know, he's going to just go home and spend too much time at home waiting for travel opportunities to open up. But, Nader, do that with our blessings and know that the city of Sacramento truly, truly has appreciated your service. And I would imagine other council members might want to chime in here, but I'm telling you truly, Nader, I'm going to miss you.
Wow. Well, thank you, Councilmember Harris. What an eloquent statement. And, Nader, thank you. 31 years of your life devoted to the city we all love. And, you know, your career is just an example of so many people who dedicate themselves to the public good, who do so without great fanfare, name doesn't get in the paper, all that stuff. But you know, as Councilmember Harris said, as you walk around or drive around this city, what you have done and what you have contributed to. And now your family gets more of you, which is a wonderful thing, and congratulations to you, Ms. Kamal. And we just wish you nothing but great, great things and lots of joy in your retirement. You're always welcome back here. I see Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Hi, Nader. This is your wife, huh?
Yep, my wife.
Hi. I've gotten to work with Nader a lot, and we have done some big projects. Mayor, here's one. We wouldn't have Centene without that gentleman right there. And, you know, that's 5,000 high-wage jobs for people in the city of Sacramento. Not only did he help do all of the engineering work around that project, but he helped me get the adjacent landowners, who had long since developed, to go back in time and contribute up to $1 million to build a bike path that is really great for our city. It is a bike path that stands alone, meaning that folks that ride on it don't have to interact with cars or anything else. So it's incredible, saving lives with his engineering skills, helping bring lots of jobs to our region, and designing things to be in a way that the communities aren't negatively impacted. Your fingerprints of your career are all over my district, everywhere. So I hope you'll spend lots of time up here enjoying your good work. And just thank you on behalf of my constituency and myself. You've helped me many, many, many times, and I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rick Jennings.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to kind of join in the party. Number one, I'm glad to see you with your wife by your side. Every good man we know has a woman by his side that is helping him to accomplish all the things that he has accomplished. So I want to give her her proper due to you, who is the ultimate professional. I mean, Councilmember Harris said it as well as anybody could have said it. The ultimate professional, so many good things that we can say about you, all the great things as an engineer. But I really enjoyed getting to know you as a fellow man, as a husband, as a father, as a man that is a leader in his community and a leader at work and has influenced others to be great, because he comes to work every day showing what greatness means. And so I've seen that in you. The bike trail that we're working on together would not happen if it had not been for you and just your diligence, your commitment to perfection. Everything about you lets me know that Sacramento is in a good place, and you have left a lasting legacy. And I want you to know, we will always remember you. As a matter of fact, as soon as I can find a good naming spot, we're going to name something after you so that your name will be remembered forever. So anyway, to you and your wife, congratulations. Enjoy retirement. But now, when he gets to be too much at home, send him back to work. We got a place for him. All right, got you. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you very much. Councilman Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Nader. Congratulations. You know, everyone has said exactly our true sentiments. I just wanted to, again, thank you for all the work you did over on the Ramona Avenue project when we had that press conference unveiling the actual completion of it. Everybody said, "Nobody thought we could ever get this thing done." And the fact that you were able to be able to get not only the state Caltrans, RTUP, the railroads, the two different council districts, all to figure out that problem. It takes an engineer like yourself to really go out and tackle all of those, not just engineering challenges, but even our bureaucratic and political challenges to find solutions. And so it was just a testament that you were able to achieve something that nobody thought could actually ever get done. It's happened. It's created so much economic opportunity in the southeast area for that. And so thank you, Nader. Congratulations. And thank you for sharing your husband with us so much also, Ms. Kamal. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Nader, would you like to give a long and flowery speech?
Absolutely. First of all, I'm overwhelmed. I'm overwhelmed by your kind words. I just want to say, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Member of City Council. I remember it like yesterday, July 1990. I was given the honor of joining the City of Sacramento as a junior engineer. And 30 years later today, I have the great honor of leaving as a division manager. To start with, I would like to thank the City of Sacramento itself for giving me this great opportunity to serve the city for 31 years. And also, I would like to thank my wife with me, Jane, for putting up with me for all these years and all her support. One thing is very important that we don't talk about it a lot. It's just this amazing journey would not have been possible without my great team, a team that I'm extremely proud of. If you ask me today what one thing you learned in this experience, I will say if you really want to accomplish big goals, you have to have a great team around you to help you and support you on your mission, which I did. I will be leaving the city with a lot of good memories and will stay with me forever. I just want to take this opportunity to thank our city manager, Howard Chan, Assistant City Manager, Hector Baron, and our Director, Ryan Moore, for trusting me and giving me the opportunity to serve as a division manager in the last three years. I would like finally to wish our new division manager, Ophelia Avalos, best of luck, much success on her new position. Thank you so much.
Thank you very, very much. Really well said. All the best to you, okay? And thank you for starting out our last meeting before the recess on such a positive note. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time.
Let us move on, members, to the consent calendar. Let me say for the record that Item 9 is going to be continued to July 27th, so there probably needs to be a separate motion on that. I know I don't want to pull it off the calendar, but I do want to speak to Item 50, the Gang Prevention and Intervention Task Force Grant Program. Are there any other items that members would like to either have discussed separately or pulled off?
Mayor, I would just like to make a comment on Item 29. I don't need to pull it.
Okay, that is fine. Let me just see if there's any other.
Mayor, you removed, I think I heard you say this, but you removed the Natomas item. It's been postponed.
I'm told it's been continued specifically to July 27th. Is that your understanding?
I think that's, City Manager Chan, you told me a different date, but that is the date that staff told me, so I just want to make sure we have it right.
That's correct, and it's not.
Why don't we go through, because I'm going to make some comments on 50, so maybe we could clarify that offline before the motion so we can get the exact date, if that's okay?
Sounds good.
And, Mr. Mayor, on Item 8, the project is in D4, not D3, so just a correction to read in the record. And Number 9 does not need a separate motion?
It does not need a separate motion. It'll just be continued, and we'll put in the record the date specific once we clarify that. And I'm sorry, Councilmember Valenzuela, can you remind me again, please, of the item?
29. I just want to make a comment.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm just marking it on my.
Mayor, I have a comment on Number 10, please.
Okay, a comment on 10. Anybody else? So that's.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment on Number 4.
Okay.
Also Number 47. And these are just comments. I'm not pulling anything.
No, that's fine.
And Item Number 50.
Yep. You can, you certainly can add on after I am. After I, maybe Councilmember Jennings makes some comments. Was that Councilman Harris who wants on Number 10?
Correct.
Okay. And then, Councilman Geta, did you have one?
Yeah, I have a comment on Number 10 and 50, and then I'll, just gratitude on Number 4.
Okay.
Mayor, and then I have comments on just one of them.
Which one?
Oh, the funding for women and children. Just a comment that I don't.
Okay. I'm just getting it all down here. And E-G-L-R-J. Okay. So now I think I have it straight. So let's go through the comments here. Let's start with Item 4. This is the Women and Family Sheltering Services Issue. Councilmember Laloe.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. Is Bridget Dean available or her office?
I'm here, council member.
Hi there. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. First of all, thank you so much for everything you're doing with this brand-new department. I know that you're going 24/7. You're probably on every member of the city halls speed dial by now, so. But I do have a question regarding Number 4. We're allocating $1 million for forensic cleaning. Is there a schedule with that or what areas we're hitting, or is it just first-come, first-served type of thing?
So thanks for asking, council member. Forensic Clean's contract had been pre-approved, and as you all know, they've been doing great work for us across the city. We've recently realigned them and put them under DCRs aside of the house so that we can better serve the community and all of your districts in a more expedient and more regular manner. And so one of the things we're going to be doing with this contract is actually entering everything into 3-1-1 for them. Last week, for example, with 3-1-1, they were able to actually expand their contacts across the city and more cleanups. So our goal with this council member is to really structure their response so that each district has specific needs met and calls for service met. And actually, I think you'll find that we'll be able to get to your issues and some of those larger concerns quicker and more diligently.
So with this particular organization, I just want to make sure I have a better understanding of this. So if there's piles of trash and what have you, they come and clean up the whole area. And so are they going to need, for example, for you to be present at the site? Or do they need fire department or police department to be present at the site? Or they're just going to go and pick up the trash? And one thing I've experienced with the homeless community is that they're very possessive about, you know, stove and lawnmowers and things that they have on the sidewalk. Is that part of cleaning, of the forensic cleaning? Or so if you can just kind of explain to me, what should we be expecting?
So to go back a bit, Forensic Clean's been doing this service for us in the city, I think, almost two years now. So they've had an extensive history and been working with various city departments, our Department of Utilities and prior, you know, the Police Department and others to respond to those issues. The goal of this is they've recently been trained on 3-1-1, and they are now using 3-1-1 as their catalyst to respond to calls. If it's specifically related to trash, then they respond on their own. There's no need for any other city department to be there. However, we do work jointly with them. If there's a larger area, maybe excess property or items that individuals choose to give up voluntarily, then we're able to work with them to get them there quickly and to reduce those items.
And then we have also allocated $582,000 for mental health. Can you explain that to me? Do we actually, are we hiring practicing psychologists and psychiatrists within your department, or this is a report?
So that request is actually kind of one of our first DCR expenditures. And what that is related to is adding mental health components to our Hope Cooperative teams that are currently doing outreach with us in DCR. The goal of that is for Hope Cooperative to hire the licensed clinicians specifically to work with us, and they currently have already hired one that will be rolling out with us soon. And so our goal with that, council member, is to be able to provide actual mental health services with a licensed clinical professional and expand our outreach. So again, as we're growing and able to assess and get out to these areas that many of you have concerns with and your community members have concerns with, then we're able to respond with a full team, including mental health experience, that can assist us.
Great. Thank you so much. And do you think our veterans that are homeless will be considered as somewhat of a priority, especially since a good portion of them are suffering from PTSD and things like that?
Our veterans across the board in this community and every county I've ever worked in with our homeless population have been a high category of response and support for us, so absolutely. And I would say that veterans in particular are some of our easiest to get services to and to house. It's just a matter of us getting to them and getting those supports in place for them, so absolutely.
Great. And then also, I know you and I, we talked about a somewhat of a protocol of getting these metal trash cans within some encampments. Where are we with that? Is that something?
Those locations, we do have the trash cans. It's a matter of getting them placed now, and then Forensic Clean will be maintaining them for you on a regular basis. We've done similar projects throughout the city, so we will get those up and running for you.
I appreciate it. Hey, thank you so much for everything you're doing, Chris. I really, truly appreciate all of your work.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilmember Laloe. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I wanted to thank Bridget Dean and also say that, you know, putting Item Number 4 on consent, everybody supports it, but it obviously deserves a little more credit because it's a very holistic item that addresses a lot of issues. Clearly, the new one is the one for having the mental health services out there, and it's a great step forward for the Center for Community Response. But the big one, I do want to thank Julia Horta and also the City of Refuge folks for their great work. One of those great programs in District 6, St. John's. I want to connect the dots here because earlier this year, in a very short amount of time, with Project Home Key, we were able to get online 66 units within a matter of weeks to be able to put people and families, specifically with kids, in two-bedroom with a kitchen and living room, very dignified housing. But it doesn't happen without the support services. So connecting the dots between what we were able to do at the beginning of the year and then this $2 million allocation, to be able to do the wraparound and support services is the critical part. So I wanted to say thank you again to all of the volunteers and all of the folks who have been out there working to keep both of those programs going for City of Refuge, that helps out a lot, the Stockton-Broadway corridor, and in District 6, longtime history with St. John's program for Real Change. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I wanted to say was, I think this item deserved a little more attention than what it has on consent.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to congratulate you, Bridget. I know you have worked hard to get this RFP done as quickly as possible. I am very grateful. This is a long sludge to get here to where an item like this would be on consent. A few years ago, it was an all-out battle that barely got five votes at the dais. And so I am ever so glad to see it be not controversial at all today. I do want to extend my extraordinary gratitude to St. John's and City of Refuge, although there are other providers who are also receiving funding today, and Hope Cooperative has been phenomenal. But, Mayor, you visited the Greens recently, and I know that City of Refuge went with you. City of Refuge has been working at the Greens for the last several months prior to actually receiving funding from the city of Sacramento to do so. And so that's what real partners look like. St. John's and City of Refuge didn't wait for this funding to come in to start helping Bridget. They've been helping Bridget for a long time and knowing that we would get to them when we could. And today is that day, and I'm really glad that we're going to be sending them the additional resources they need to help serve women, children, and families. And I think this is a very positive step in the direction of trying to achieve that functional zero that I know Sacramento can achieve, where we don't have children sleeping on our streets. So I am looking forward to voting on this item and grateful that it is on consent, Bridget. Glad to have a shepherd like you in the House and really thrilled to have providers who believe in us, believe in the vision of the city, and this mayor who will go out there and work with us before we even get them in a deal. So, thank you.
Well, I should pile on here. Thank you to my colleagues for really great, great work here. But I do think it is noteworthy, what both Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Geta said a moment ago, the fact that this is on consent, it really is a marked change in the way we are acting as a city when it comes to this problem, that we are moving, and the needs are just so tremendous. We are far from there. I'm going to speak a lot about this tomorrow morning. But I just think it is very noteworthy where we have come between the Department of Community Response, all the resources, the political leadership from our council here, and these incredible providers, you're right, who are dedicated to helping as many people as they can, as long as we get them more money. So, good stuff. Thank you. Let us move now to the discussion for Item 10.
Two more comments on this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not see that. Councilmember Vang and Councilmember Harris. Go, go.
Thanks, Mayor. I had my hand raised earlier, but, folks, my colleagues, we're already pulling items that I was going to comment on. So I'll keep my comments short for Item 4. I just, again, want to take this moment and say thank you to Bridget for all her amazing work, her heart and hustle on the ground, and it's really great to see movement on the mental health response piece under the Department of Community Response. So really excited to see movement on that, Bridget, and just thank you just for your leadership. I, too, am super thrilled to be supporting this agreement approval. And I just want to uplift and remind folks that in early February, during mid-year budget, council did appropriate, did set aside $2 million to support women and family sheltering programs. And a big part of the reason why was because Mayor Pro Tem Ashby actually made that ask, if you watched the February 2nd council meeting. And so we're seeing it here tonight, and we're seeing it being executed. So I just wanted to take this moment to say thank you to Mayor Pro Tem Ashby for being a steadfast advocacy for women and children, and it was you who made that ask. So we're going to see it tonight, and I just want to say congratulations to you and the council, and it's great to see this on consent. So thank you so much.
So, Mayor, my comment is very short.
Yes.
Bridget, I just want to give a shout out to Hope Cooperative and Aaron Johansson. I think they're an excellent pick for mental health facilitation. I know their work, great outfit, and you, Bridget, as always, are brilliant. That's all.
Well, thank you. Can't say enough positives here. So let's move now to Item 10, where Councilmember Harris. And maybe Councilmember Geta, if I have my notes right, wanted to comment on Item 10. Go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, so we're going for a pro-housing recognition, and I think it's a great thing. You know, it could avail us of grant opportunities, maybe even allocations. But of the categories by which you can get points to be scored for this designation, in the staff report, it talks about, you know, including allowing duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes in single-unit dwelling zones, going beyond the state density bonus law, things like that. It's actually premature to do that. I've talked to staff about that because we haven't taken a vote on that, and we still have much work to do in this realm. And they agree that it would not be the appropriate thing to include that particular aspect in the four categories. I just want to say to staff that I appreciate their efforts. We should definitely go for this pro-housing designation and that I have, hopefully, a project that will score us more points, and we're going to be having a meeting with the mayor's office on Thursday about this very idea. So good luck to all of our planning staff, and thank you for pursuing this.
Good. Thank you so much. Councilmember Geta.
Yeah, in that same line, I wanted to, I think there were concerns in my council district about whether this resolution prematurely binds us to anything. This is only an ability for us to go after grants. Any action actually has to come back to council, and we're going to be doing that through the entire general plan process. So I wanted to, you know, again, you know, just make a comment that I think it's important that we apply for the funds and go after every dollar because there's no question that our city has a significant housing challenge in all levels, and we should be going after every opportunity to recover those funds. But that this resolution doesn't prematurely bind the council in any action without the council taking an affirmative vote.
Very good. Right, there's a lot of debate ahead on the fourplex issue and all the other pieces of the housing element. Well, the only thing I'm going to say is I'm always pushing, as I know you, many of my colleagues, all of my colleagues are, for more housing options. Well, the only thing I'm going to say is I'm always pushing, as I know you, many of my colleagues, all of my colleagues are, for more housing options. That's what we need in this city. We don't have enough housing and enough affordable housing. Let's just always keep that um in mind, but this this is a good start. Um, item twenty-nine. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. And um, this project is not in my district. It's in Councilmember Garrett's district, but I couldn't let this moment pass without marking what is a really momentous moment for community groups in the Morrison Creek area. We've been working on this for a really long time, and I had the pleasure of working with them on it when I was on the board for the Sacramento Community Land Trust, and just want to say that, you know, what started as a community cleanup project is now turned into this big city initiative to engineer a creek trail and to do a community plan. And this is just the best example of what community-led leadership looks like in Sacramento. And so I just want to thank them for the years of work that took getting to this moment and really celebrate city staff getting involved now through this grant and looking forward to seeing what comes of it. So thank you for giving me the space for that.
Very good. Thank you so much. All right, now let's go on to item forty-seven, which is Councilmember Lulowee wanted to make a comment.
Oh, yes. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is regarding um Robertson Park softball field renovation, and this is a a contract that we have reached with Mutual Assistant as far as leasing. Um, I do not see within this item number forty-seven. Um, I I don't see any of our local associations involved with um this facility, uh, such as um, the Strawberry Manor Association or the El Paso Heights uh, Heights uh, Community Association. So I I like to kind of get a feel on either we can pull this or have this discussion right now. In all fairness, Mutual Assistance, uh, we were supposed to meet last week, and unfortunately, I I had some scheduling conflict, and I I missed it. So um, either we can discuss it right now about getting these community organizations involved with this um operation, or if you see fit, Mr. Mayor, we can uh pull it and then um bring it on as soon as we can, put it back on 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 the agenda as soon, the first week when we get back from our reset.
So explain the problem again. I'm sorry. I know that uh, this was a major deal for Mutual.
It's huge. It it's fantastic. So we have a, we have the Robertson uh, uh, Robertson Center, and and then now we're adding the Robertson Park Softball Field. Both of these entities have uh, at least that Mutual Assistant uh, has picked up, and they're going to be responsible for uh, the operation. However, um, I I do have, I came across a document that was signed in two thousand sixteen uh, by Mutual Assistant saying that um, the El Paso Heights Community Association and Strawberry Manor Neighborhood Association, um, they will be uh, co-active within those facilities, within the Robertson Center.
What does that mean, co-active?
So that means they're going to be involved in day-to-day operation um, as well. Um, they have strong roots in that community. Uh, they will have, you know, they will bring in classes that can encourage the youth to utilize this facility. And I just want to make sure that still exists going forward to get.
Let's clarify that right now, then, if we can. I see Mr. Constantino on on the line here. Can you clarify that for Councilmember Lulowee to ensure that that two thousand sixteen partnership agreement is still operative?
Sure. I mean, we've been working with Sierra Health Foundation and Mutual Assistance Network, and we rely on them to um, do this collaborative work with the communities. And um, as we go forward, we can just rekindle that and just make sure that that is happening to a level of satisfaction from the community groups.
So, go ahead, Councilmember.
My apologies. Um, how are you, Mr. Raymond? Great seeing you. Um, do you think then this two thousand sixteen uh agreement that was signed, can that be attached to this uh, new agreement that the city is having with Mutual Assistant?
Yeah, well, let me suggest, I'll help you here. Why don't you make the motion, um, include include the agreement as part of the motion? And if there is some different uh, if there is some different interpretation now, then then we will bring it back. But why don't you make the motion um, and add in that the document?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to add an existing contract dated uh, January eleventh, two thousand sixteen um, to um, the the Robertson Park Softball Field, um, that's being run by Mutual Assistant. I like the the community contract to this new contract that we're about to sign with Mutual.
Okay, two things. Number one, if we could, whoever the maker of the consent calendar motion is, if we can add that so we don't have to separate the item, what Councilmember Lulowee just said. Um, and secondly, if you could somehow get that document to all my colleagues now so that they at least have it in front of them when they're when when they're voting on this, that would be helpful, okay? Because we're going to talk about item fifty, that's going to take maybe five or 10 minutes. So you can get that out, and then whoever the maker of the consent calendar motion is, we're going to, I'm going to ask that you add Councilmember Lulowee's addendum to item forty-seven, okay? Fair enough?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Now let's move to item fifty, and I'm going to go first here because um there is some important um context and and clarity to be had on this very, very important item. Several weeks ago, as you all know, um, the city council met uh, to discuss this action item. And on a five to four vote, um, we rarely have those five to four votes, but on a five to four vote, we continued the item for several weeks because of a number of questions that were raised. And so in those uh, in those weeks, um, I have engaged with in extensive conversations and consultations with Councilmember Jennings, who's really been a great leader in this area for so long. City Manager Howard Chan. Um, our new uh, Violence Prevention Coordinator Nicole Clavoe, Chief Han, and community leadership, including Chet Hewitt. And I should add Chris Conlon to that list as well. After those uh, extensive consultations, as mayor of the city, I want to commit us to the following, and I know um, Howard Chan uh, will 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 add a a few comments here. Number one, that we go forward today enthusiastically with the recommendation, item fifty. Um, it, the recipients are strong, um, they're ready to go to work, and we need to get going now. The summer has just started, so we want to pass item fifty today. But that's not all. Secondly, we want to commit today to an RFP um, as soon as possible, and I mean as soon as possible, for an additional $500,000. The intent of the additional $500,000 is to increase the diversity uh, of not just our um, our 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 CBOs who are providing the services, but to make sure that we are touching all of the diverse communities in Sacramento that are touched by uh, violence and specifically gang activity. Number three, that we put forward an RFP at the same time for an additional million. So this is a million five, and we're going to have the discussion and debate within the context of the uh, of the American Relief Plan. And and again, we're not voting on this today. I'm just stating my intention, what I intend to bring forward with the city manager. That we put forward an RFP for an additional $1 million for direct intervention with young men, I think it's mostly men, I don't know if it includes women as well, correct me if I'm wrong, but young men who are active gang members. This is known in the public health parlance as the tertiary approach and commonly known by the vernacular Advanced Peace. The RFP will be competitive, so no particular program will be pre-selected. Per the intensive discussions with all of the individuals I mentioned earlier, the RFP will resolve some of the police department reporting issues that have been a challenge or at least questioned in the last go-around. And so uh, we have all worked very hard over these last weeks to move forward, to move forward, and to commit, at least from my office, I know the manager's office, I know Councilmember Jennings' office, to commit more resources to this crucial, crucial challenge in our city. But to get this money from the RFP of four weeks ago out as quickly as possible, that's the intention, Mr. City Manager?
You know, Mayor, you did a really good job summarizing a lot of the work that's transpired over the last couple of weeks since that council meeting. I will only add to say that this is a uh, a strong commitment from the city uh, on a very challenging problem for our city. Uh, and as part of the RFP that we're awarding today, I just want to remind that we've had uh, more um, more demand, uh, more availability of resources to address this problem than we had resources. And so the subsequent RFP is going to be critical to get out quickly. Uh, with regard to the tertiary uh, response to gang violence, we are going to put another million dollars out, but we are going to make sure that we are collaborative in working with uh, this council and community leaders to make sure that the scope of work covers all the things that we needed to cover and the things that we've learned uh, during the uh, the program with Advanced Peace. So that's all I'll add to that, and uh, happy to uh, ask her any questions. The Paul Clavos on the line, along with Chris Conlon and others.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Jennings, I want to give you the uh, a comment, and then I know Mr. Tamashe is up as well. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, really appreciate your work on this and um Councilmember uh, Gadda, Councilmember Lulowee that I've worked directly with, and also Howard uh, uh, City Manager Howard Chan. Just want to thank all of you for your work on it, and and I know I'm going to forget somebody. Uh, Chris Conlon has been instrumental. And uh, the Office of Violence Prevention, Nicole Clavoe, Dr. Nicole Clavoe has also been instrumental as well. I just want to thank all of them for the work in getting us to this point. Um, I I think this is a great solution, and I think uh, my concern has always been that, yes, there is more demand than resources, and there is no single solution or no single entity that is out there that can solve the increased crime and the increased violence that we're seeing in our community. And I'm reminded of a of a of a young lady who I came across, and she talked to me about crime rising. She talked to me about a sense of urgency, and then she talked to me and said, what are you going to do about it? And for me, the time is now right to get this grant out on the street, the RFP that we had uh, that we that we've had for the last six weeks with the, with the six weeks or whatever amount of time, uh, with the six uh, providers. Get that out on the street. But what we've also done is we've added more resources to the table in order for us to address the problem of rising crime, rising violence in our community. We are going to do something about it. We're not going to get like Oakland where violence is epidemic, and we don't want to get to that point. So we want to get in front of it. That's why we want to get this money on the street now. That's why we want to add more resources, and we want to make sure that the entire community Sacramento is represented in this important issue of violence prevention. So I'm I'm excited uh, to support uh, this this effort and looking forward to working with the organizations that are going to be providing the services, looking forward to their collaboration with other organizations that are already out there, and uh, I'm excited to move forward with this.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, can you help me with the order of the next speakers? Because I'm, I don't know who went first.
There was before me.
Okay, Councilmember Getta.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, first I want to thank you for uh, for, you know, pulling together a lot of the partners. I want to give first also a a a strong um, shout out here and recognition to Councilmember Jennings. Uh, because for a long, for since the day I came on the council, he has been making sure that this was uh, on the forefront, and it was the first thing he asked that uh, we worked together on and uh, and to and to uh, to get us to a point where um, this is on a consent item, just like as we were discussing beforehand. What happened last week, or the last time in our meeting, uh, I wouldn't say it was a disagreement. Uh, I was, because we all want the same outcome. But what was, was the lack of 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 us uh, recognizing that there's a higher need to fund these programs than a million dollars. That that would happen last, the last time we met was basically, I wouldn't even have called that uh, you know, a recognition of 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 trying to address the problem. It was, it was barely even a band-aid. Um, what we heard this last week from, you know, the uh, the president, and I and I got it, I got this message from multiple people, including Councilmember Jennings, was there a response from President Biden from the top saying we need to fund a tertiary response and to making sure that we look at using not only our local dollars but our federal dollars to address this this uh, this, you know, issue that we have that's affecting so many of our community. And uh, what was concerning, and I know, and I I want to thank Councilmember Jennings for bringing this up, was that we uh, we were missing many communities where we see uh, this rise in um, in gun violence um, that's happening as well. And it's not just in, you know, young African-American men, but we see it in young Latino men and also i- in uh, in young API Southeast Asian men. And so the fact that we have to make sure that all our part, all our uh, approach here is encompassing those challenges immediately and getting ahead of it is uh, critical. So uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this three-pronged approach that you're proposing, uh, I know we're not voting on all of those pieces, but I heard the city manager's commitment to move forward on that. Uh, and uh, and it, and it's the right approach because the the disagreement we had or the lack of agreement we had last time is we were fighting over a very small pie with a lot of pieces, and expanding that pie is what's going to help us address the the issue that we have. Uh, with that, Mr. Mayor, I didn't, I don't know if I heard a a motion on the consent calendar, but with that, I'll I'll move the consent with the direction that you've provided forward here to come back.
And Councilmember Lulowee's amendment on item forty-seven.
That is correct.
And with uh, the item, the Natomas uh, item being continued to I'm still not sure what date, July twenty-seventh, I think we're going to say July twenty-seventh, okay? Okay.
I'm I'm happy to second that motion, Mayor, although, Councilmember Lulowee, I still haven't seen the language um, for your amendment, if that could get sent.
Okay, can we get, is it possible to get it to the clerk and the clerk can get it to?
I I I just sent it to uh, my chief of staff, and I asked her to email it to all the uh, members.
Okay.
Mayor, can I ask one question on this item? Oh, sorry.
Well, I'm sorry, yeah, let me just get in order, if that's okay, and we'll, we'll, we'll for sure get to you. I think it was Councilmember, who who was next, Madam Clerk? Because I'm not playing, you know, I gotta be fair here. Who is next?
You have Ashby, Lulowee, Harris, then Vang.
Thank you, in that order.
Okay, I can be very brief on this, Mayor. I just want to uh, thank Nicole Clavoe. Dr. Clavoe is a tremendous asset to the city of Sacramento. She has been working in this space for a long time. She's known to so many people because of her lived experience here with losing her own son to gun violence. She does this as heart work. And I'm really glad that we have her in the city of Sacramento, and I am profoundly happy to support this. Not just because of the additional money, which is great. It's wonderful. The more we can do. Councilmember Jennings has been pushing this for a long time, a rock up a hill, when we didn't have any money at all in the city to spend on this. We he found ways to partner and get some of this done. So congratulations to you, Councilmember Jennings. You must be very happy today to see additional money being attributed. We would have killed for $25,000 probably uh, five years ago for this. We were trying anything we could. So it's it's great um, to see this additional money added, but I also to have a dedicated person like Dr. Clavoe and staff is just a real testament to everyone's real efforts and dedication to this issue, particularly hers. And I just like to point out that many of the groups that are being funded through the original RFP do that same kind of tertiary response, including brother to brother and sister to sister, who focus on um, arriving at the scene and really working with young people and trying to avoid gun violence as well. So really proud to support all of this and excited for the next round as well to add more, more help in the mix. Good work for everyone.
Very good. Thank you. And uh, Councilmember Lulowee, Harris, and Vang. And then we have eighteen callers, uh, members of the public, and then we'll vote on the consent calendar.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I I want to personally thank Dr. Clavoe uh, and her team. I had a great meeting. I had a great meeting with her, I believe it was yesterday, and I want to thank her for her time and sharing some information with me. Is Dr. Clavell here?
Ms. On.
All right. You know, I'm in full support of the item 50. I think we definitely need to be more involved and to make sure our youth are safe. There are a few things that kind of came to my mind late yesterday that I wanted to share with Dr. Clavell. One is that, you know, it would be great if her, your office, is she here or am I?
She's on the call.
Okay, great. It'd be great.
I'm here.
Thanks, Dr. Clavell. It would be great if somehow your office can kind of bring all these six organizations somehow to work in collaboration, where one organization might be very strong in one sector versus the next, rather than just all six trying to do the same thing. You know, if you can kind of envision that, I would greatly appreciate it. Also, you know, I'm very big with youth. I mean, 90% of why I decided to run for this seat was for the youth. And organizations like these six are very important. With that said, when we spend money with these organizations to protect our youth, that's something that it's going to get my attention, and I want to follow every penny that goes, moves around. So one thing I would like to ask you, Dr. Clavell, is that if you are able to provide a report every three months on these six organizations, what have they been able to accomplish, and what was the cost factor for those, you know, let's say those three months? And then also, you indicated one of the, one of the organizations, and I believe it's the Wellness Foundation, that they're actually bringing a licensed psychologist on their staff who is practicing. If you could, when you get a chance, share that information with us as far as the times that that office is available to have this, to have the youth, so we can kind of know exactly what's going on. My goal at the end of the day is, by the end of this year, from these six wonderful organizations, we have to see what they were able to accomplish in these next 12 months, and then we'll have to rate them. Because again, when we're giving out money to organizations in the, with the hope of protecting our youth, our expectation from these organizations should be much higher than anything else that we've done. So if I can get your response on this, Dr. Clavell, I would greatly appreciate it. So three things. One, do you think your office can work to make these six organizations to work as, to collaborate together to help our youth? Two, the Wellness Foundation, they're bringing in a licensed practicing psychologist on their team. Will you be able to give us the time and the dates that that's going to be available? And three, every three months, giving us an updated report on the great things that these six organizations have accomplished? Is that something feasible, Dr. Clavell, or am I?
Let's let Dr. Clavell answer the questions so that we can, we can get right to it and move through. Go ahead, Dr. Clavell.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and City Council members. One, for the collaborative piece, these organizations have been well-working together way before there was money involved. So they are already doing referrals back and forth to one another throughout the city as well as within your community. So I know, I don't believe that's a problem. As well as, as I had discussed with you yesterday, one of the things that the Office of Violence Prevention is going to be demanding is that not only we meet monthly as a collective, but we'll be meeting with organizations that are not receiving money as well, that did not receive funding through this process but has agreed and have asked to continue to be a part of the work and the process within the Office of Violence Prevention. So no, I don't see that as an issue. I don't see it as an issue with meeting with the Wellness Foundation, the Neighborhood Wellness Foundation as either. I believe they'd be more than willing to meet with you in your office. I think they have already put a request in through the mayor's office to meet with each and every council member, but that has not been scheduled as of yet. And they do, I don't know if she's a psychologist or a licensed therapist, I'm not for sure which one she is, but I do know that they do have licensed mental health facilitators that they work with and is a part of their program. And as far as every three months, giving you financial updates, I will report out to you as soon as I get it.
Or achievement updates, right? What they have achieved, so we can see that this ball is moving forward and to see if there's any additional assistance that they need, so we can step in. So something that, some metric that we can see, hey, everything's moving in a positive way.
And all of the organizations, as I had explained to you yesterday, will be working with Dr. Melissa Newberger, who does the evaluation out of the Office of Violence Prevention through SCOLI. And so we work closely with her, the organizations work closely with her. She is very well-known throughout the city, throughout Sacramento City, as well as the city manager's office. So we will be working close with her ongoing.
I really appreciate your time, Dr. Clavell. I'm very excited that you're involved with this program, and you have my support, and if there's anything my office can do, please don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you very much for everything you do.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Can I chime in just for a bit here? Maybe I'll work with Dr. Clavell here to look at the first check-in here, because we want to make sure we can stand up the programs for these six individuals, and we'll get back with an update to this council three to six months. And I'll work directly with you and let you know the timing of that a little bit better. I just want to give people the opportunity to get established, get started, and then be able to report something out.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you. Good questions. Councilmember Harris, then Councilmember Vang, and then we're going to move to public testimony.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, I just want to reinforce the idea that gun violence is happening in every district, in every part of the city. And I agree with you and the manager and Councilmember Jennings that more resources need to be allocated to this, to this problem. Just recently, there was a shooting at the greenhouse in the Gardenland neighborhood in my district, and it's been a repeated problem. This is something that we need to get to the heart of. So I am appreciative that we will move forward more energetically than this initial contract. And I look forward to the RFPs and working much harder on this problem. Obviously, gun violence is a tremendous issue, and I can tell you, I want to give kudos to PD, because they have been harvesting guns on West Al Camino at an amazing rate, and getting those guns off the street is just as important as working with the youth who wield them. So taken in tandem, we can, we can make some real progress here. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Vang?
Thanks, Mayor. Just want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Clavell for her, her great work. And Mayor, I want to thank you and Councilmember Jennings in particular for your leadership and working with the CBOs in conversation about really what the need is here in our city. And so I really appreciate the direction and the support for additional dollars to invest in prevention and violence interruption, to address gun violence. I was going to ask a very similar question to Councilmember Shawna Leloy around what type of safeguards we have in place to monitor progress of the current grantees and future grantees, because I do think that it's really important. As we are getting, you know, dollars from federal government, we are becoming an agency that gives out dollars to CBOs, and I think making sure that we're able to monitor and also show what kind of outcomes that we have to our constituents and our neighborhoods is going to be really important. So that was my question, but I think Dr. Clavell answered it with, you know, the monthly meetings and that there will be a report back in three months, if I heard correctly. And I think City Manager Chan just mentioned that you'll be working with that. So I look forward to seeing that, because I will say, these grants are one-time. They are one-time funding, very important funding that needs to happen in our community, because the need is very dire. But just want to remind folks that it is one-time funding. And so I think at the council, we also have to think long-term in terms of sustainability, because I don't think, you know, the change is going to happen overnight, and we're going to need to be steadfast with our work and our commitment. And so just want to put that on the radar, because I know these are only one-time funds, and it's not sustainable. So making sure that we think ahead on that piece. So again, thank you so much, Dr. Clavell and Mayor and Councilmember Jennings, just for your leadership on this issue.
All right. Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Clavell. You know, this has been a, an interesting first go of it. Thank you for hanging in there. You know, we're all a team here at City Hall, you know? Fuss and fight a little bit, maybe a lot, you know, all towards, you know, the end that we all seek and that you seek, and we're really glad to have you here. So thank you. Okay, let's hear from members of the public, please.
Thank you. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I am Karen Zanotto, and I'm a volunteer leader with Moms Demand Action. I'm calling today in regards to item 50, the grant awards from the Office of Violence Prevention. Gun violence is at unprecedented levels in America, and Sacramento is no exception. I am urging you to continue to fund Advanced Peace as well. Advanced Peace is on the front lines of addressing gun violence. Advanced Peace reaches a community that other organizations don't reach, and it should be allowed to continue that work. In 2020, Advanced Peace prevented 84 firearm incidents, with the cost savings to the city of somewhere between $36.5 and $84 million from gun violence interruptions. Before the pandemic struck, there were 28 months with no juvenile homicides. Their program has a track record of success in reducing gun violence. By investing in these proven solutions that provide targeted prevention and recovery to communities in crisis, Sacramento can reduce violence and promote safety and well-being of all its residents. Sacramento must provide sustained investment in community-based solutions like Advanced Peace, which take a local, innovative, and precise approach to preventing cyclical gun violence in communities, and has proven successful in reducing gun violence crimes. Please continue to do what works and continue to fund Advanced Peace. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please.
I want to say something here for a moment, if I might. We want to hear from all the members of the public. I would just urge you, anybody, say whatever you like, of course, but in your comments, recognize that there is a clear consensus going forward that we are going to fund the tertiary approach, known as Advanced Peace, but through an RFP. So we're going to do that. And so just want you to know that as you're making your comments, so that you don't have to, you don't have to say it more than, more than necessary, because this is the direction that we are going, all right?
Thank you. Welcome to the meeting, caller. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. In these spaces, we're typically, you know, supposed to be quote-unquote professional, manage emotions in a certain way. I don't know if I'm going to be able to do that. I'm going to do my best, but I'm certainly not going to apologize for any emotions that I express or feel. I'm feeling quite angry. I've been on hold here for an hour. I'm repeating myself. I feel like elected officials don't listen. There's a lot of miscommunications. I volunteer with various organizations, including SAC Act, some environmental organizations, trying to better our community. We have a meeting with you all, and we try to clarify some misunderstandings that just keep on seem to resurfacing, be resurfacing. Apparently, Dr. Clavell said the six chosen RFP organizations have been working in collaboration long before the RFP process began. That's not my understanding, and being collaborative would be reaching out to more than just one person, other than Chet Hewitt. There's also been some misunderstandings about funding, about organizations that have, as far as, I mean, the community that SAC Act and the people that we talk to and we are advocating for and trying to communicate to you as they're elected officials what they want. Oh, I'm in, Jay Shonera, I'm in your district, by the way. Trying to communicate like what they want, the organizations like Healing the Hood, Advanced Peace, The Village, there's a loud train going by right now. You know, those organizations that have been working, those are the ones that need to be funded. And there's some miscommunications that you all have, misunderstandings, tragic misinformation about.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
All Lives Matter will matter when Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and council members. My name is Suzanne Lander, and I am a constituent of District One, as well as a volunteer with Moms Demand Action. I am calling in regarding item number 50. I support all the community-based organizations working diligently in Sacramento to prevent gun violence, especially the work that Advanced Peace has been doing, and want them and their partners to be allowed to continue their critical work. Myself and others would like to see sustainable and adequate funding provided for Advanced Peace to ensure that they have the manpower and resources to address the nationwide uptick in gun violence here in the beautiful city of Sacramento. This is our chance to once again be proactive and make a significant investment towards public safety. Thank you for your time today and for your willingness to continue to fund this critical work by our community-based organizations.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Rosemary Yoshikawa, and I'm a volunteer lead with Moms Demand Action. I'm calling to comment on item 50 on the agenda, the grants award from the Office of Violence Prevention. As a gun violence prevention advocate, I support organizations that work to reduce gun violence. An organization that we have worked closely with is Advanced Peace Sacramento. We support Advanced Peace because they have a proven record of reducing gun violence in Sacramento and focus on interrupting cyclical and retaliatory gun violence. Advanced Peace uses a healing-centered approach and reaches a community not reached by other organizations. They provide a unique service that no other community-based organization provides. Gun violence is at truly crisis levels. We need full and sustainable funding for our organizations, including Advanced Peace, to continue to interrupt and prevent gun violence. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Carol Rogers, and I am the volunteer leader of the Sacramento Chapter of Moms Demand Action. I am calling about item 50 on the consent calendar, the grant awards from the Office of Violence Prevention. As a survivor of gun violence, I support the work being done by organizations to prevent gun violence. But in these unprecedented times with gun violence at record levels, we need to do more. I urge you to support more organizations and fund more programs, including specifically Advanced Peace. Gun violence is at crisis levels, and the work that Advanced Peace does in Sacramento is essential. They work with those most at risk, and these individuals are not reached by other organizations. By improving the health and well-being of those most affected by gun violence, we will put an end to this crisis that is plaguing our communities. A historic spike in gun violence should equal a historic investment in solving the problem. I hope you will continue to fund Advanced Peace and the vital work they do in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, I'm speaking on behalf of District Two, Gang Prevention. I wanted to mention a organization, Brother to Brother. I attended a gun prevention seminar about a couple of weeks ago. Good seminar. Had a lot of good feedback and a lot of... Had a lot of good feedback and a lot of recognition. A lot of people that were there had the crowd's attention, and I just wish it would have been a little longer. And I asked about the program having another seminar in regards to gun prevention and gang prevention, and they couldn't give me a definite answer on when they'd be able to hold another seminar, because I thought it was great. A lot of more people need to be able to attend, so I would definitely recommend assistance there with regards to funding, so that they could extend their programs, because I felt that it was an excellent seminar, gun prevention, gang prevention. And what they do in the Sacramento neighborhood is excellent, and the respect that they have is excellent. And they should definitely be assisted, so that they can continue their program and try to make a change in Del Paso Heights area, especially this area, the 95838 area They definitely need some type of funding, so they can extend their programs.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Just more funding in the Del Paso Heights area for these programs, especially Brother to Brother-
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, I'm calling from Sacramento Act. As an interfaith multicultural organization with longstanding roots in Sacramento stretching over 30 years, we believe that the only way to decrease violence is to heal those closest to the pain, and we support Advance Peace as an organization that exemplifies such a model. Advance Peace is an organization that has been working for years with proven data to address community violence. I'm calling in support of Advance Peace and ask for adequate and sustainable funding for Advance Peace and gun violence prevention as a whole. We understand that you are funding the approach, and we need you to commit to funding the organization that is leading this approach, which is Advance Peace. Across the nation, cities are preparing for a massive uptick in violence this summer. We're already seeing the messages in our children's group chats, and the city needs to act proactively right now. The COVID-19 pandemic has fueled the highest gun homicide numbers in over 20 years across the nation. Now is not the time to stop funding one of the only programs that has the data to back up their work. During the Advance Peace intervention period in 2019, Sacramento saw a 22% reduction rate of gun homicides and assaults. We are advocating for all of the organizations in the Violence Prevention and Intervention Network to be funded on a regular basis. $1 million is not enough to address the scope of violence Sacramento is currently, as well as expected, to face in the coming months. You just approved an $8 million increase to Sacramento PD's budget totaling around $164 million, and we need to see the same level of investment in community-based solutions that are committed to serving our most vulnerable communities. Organizations like Advance Peace and Healing the Hood are supporting the work of law enforcement, and they should be receiving adequate funding as a result of that work. Just one example is how they were called in over the holidays to support what was going down at Delta Shores. And we encourage the council and mayor to use the Public Safety Resolution passed in October to frame these discussions and include public hearings when dealing with issues that impact your constituents, such as gun violence-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. We ask that you consider our request with Sacramento's best interest at heart. Your constituents are watching, and they expect you to do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, this is Marie Saliv. I'm a teen with Impact SAC. There are about 15 of us watching the meeting right now, and I just wanted to mention everything that I like about this program. It's provided us with such great opportunities as teens, that we don't necessarily get through school or anywhere else. It's a great resource for all of us. I wish that there were more that could join or know about us, so that we could branch out better. I'm working right now, I'm with the SAC Youth Work Program, and we've been offered lessons such as how to prepare well for an interview, what are the expected, what is the expected way that you should come and how you be prepared. And that's not something I can learn in a classroom at school. So it's a really, really great resource that is not anywhere else. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Miss Beaann Moore, and I'm with, and I'm with Impact SAC. I personally feel like bringing the youth together is one of the best options for our community, because dealing with gun violence and other stuff is like, with youth, it's crazy. And I feel like the youth bringing each other together is the best option.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, so I'm Kyler with Impact SAC, and I'm very disappointed with the actions of the council from the last meeting, because you asked teens to join these calls, and we did so. And every person in the council, including the mayor, called us a kid cult. And I think that's very immature of you guys, saying that you want us on these calls and participating. So I just want to see better actions from you guys. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Arlen. On behalf of Impact SAC, the reason why I was calling is because I feel like everybody should know that Impact SAC is really a great organization, where it really outreaches to all teens. And if you guys do end up giving us these funds, we will be working more, and we will be out there, and yeah, we will be making more change.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, thank you. Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Katie Robb with Mutual Assistance Network, and I'm calling in about Item Number 47 for Robertson Community Center and Park. Mutual Assistance Network, we co-drafted the letter that is referenced by Councilmember Leloe earlier in this meeting. It does represent an important partnership with Strawberry Manor's Neighborhood Association to make sure that Robertson Community Center is about the community. We do value all of our community partnerships. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, like all of our community centers, it was closed for traditional activities, with the exception of COVID response work for residents. And as a leaseholder during this time, we continue to pay all operating costs for the center. As we look forward, as we look fully reopened, we are happy to revisit operations with our community partners. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Veronica Bolis. I'm from Impact SAC. I'm one of the program managers here. I think it's really important to involve the youth in topics that we're discussing. If we're talking about the youth, the youth should be involved. That's why we encourage all of our youth to attend today's meeting and call in and share why Impact SAC is so important to them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
Okay, thank you all very, very much. Thank you to the members of the public for calling in. We have a motion and a second on the entire consent calendar, with the exception of the one item that is being continued. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Protam Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Leloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Mindy, my vote is aye, except I'd like to abstain on Item 47, because I haven't received the communication from Councilmember Leloe.
Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Same as Councilmember Harris, yes, with abstaining on Item 47. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
I would, I'm just going to take the same vote as Councilmember Harris as well.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. So the entire consent calendar, with the exception of 47, passes nine to nothing. Item 47 passes with six ayes and three abstentions. All right, members, thank you. With that objection at the request of the staff, I want to see if we can do Item 53 first, which is the McRode Property and Business Improvement District.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg, members of the city council. Ceni MacCeney with the Finance Department. The item before you is the public hearing for the renewal of the McRode Property and Business Improvement District, which at this time, staff recommends opening the public hearing. Upon the close of the public hearing, the city clerk's office and city staff will count the ballots and report back to council as a consent item on July 20th with the tabulation results. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there public testimony on this item, Madam Clerk?
I have no callers on this item.
Councilmember Vang, this is your district.
Yeah, no, I, just a few words. Want to thank all of the partners and the McRode PBIT, just for your tireless work for renewal. The McRode PBIT has been so critical for our community. I just also want to share with all of you that while it is a business improvement district, about half of it is residential, and they do such great community work. And I really want to say congratulations also, because they have worked really hard to get the renewal, and I just want to give a shout out to Bill Milton, just for the great work that he's doing. And so with that, that's the only comment I have, and we can move forward on this item.
You got to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve this item.
Open and close the public hearing.
I'll open and close the public hearing. Thanks, Councilmember Shenair.
I'll second. Please call the roll.
Mayor Protam Ashby?
Good work, Councilmember Vang. Yes.
Councilmember Leloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right, thank you all very much. Let's go back now to Item 51, which is the Urban Water Management Plan. Who's presenting on this?
Good afternoon, Mayor and city council. My name is Brett Ewart, senior engineer with the Department of Utilities. So today, prior to the public hearing on the Urban Water Management Plan, we actually have a short video, if it pleases the mayor and city council. This item, I should say, the video was prepared in conjunction with an award presented by the Association of California Water Agencies. In 2021, Councilwoman Jeff Harris and Placer County Water Agency Director Robert Dugan were presented Aqua's Excellence in Water Leadership Award. This recognized their work in protecting the headwaters of our water supply and their focus on enhancing drinking water quality and supply, flood control, groundwater management, and forest management. We play this today to provide some context in your consideration of the Urban Water Management Plan. And with your permission, Mayor, I'd like to ask the clerk to play the video now.
Hi, Aqua friends and colleagues. I'm Councilmember Jeff Harris, and I'm here with my good friend, Robert Dugan, and longtime member of the Placer County Water Agency.
Mindy, we can't see the video. Open.
Or hear it.
Let me attempt to restart that.
I'm Councilmember Jeff Harris, and I'm here with my good friend, Robert Dugan, and longtime member of the Placer County Water Agency. We're both thrilled and honored to receive this recognition of our work for water resources. So join me now as we take a trip from the headwaters all the way down to the confluence of the American and Sacramento River. Whoa, I'm good, I'm good, right? Here with the water. As a matter of fact, we're pretty close to where it starts. Placer County Water Agency's responsibility begins in the headwaters, where the snow falls. We know that if you can't store water white, as in snowfall, you've got to store it wet, either in storage above ground or below ground. Ninety percent of the water we manage up in this region flows through our region, through Sacramento, and on into the rest of the state to take care of environmentally in the Delta, environmentally up and down the state, the Ag community in our Central Valley, and even over the Tehachapi, after the King Fire devastated so many acres. We immediately got to work with our federal agencies and our federal congressional offices throughout the region and helped them change the paradigm under which we fund forest health. It also informed our partnerships at the local level. Our partnerships have carried us to a new place in water policy. Robert and I have worked together for years to craft policy that affects our region in a beneficial way, both in our economy and water supply. I also work on flood control issues and developing new sources of water. You know, in essence, whether we're talking about surface water, groundwater, recycled water, wastewater, or conserved water, it all ties into the same thing. We're looking for water security for the future of our region and for the state. And it all adds up to a strong community and a good water future for us all. So as water agencies, we need to stay creative, stay connected, and stay intact.
Well, Councilmember Harris, you have a future.
That's what my mother said. Hollywood is calling.
As a narrator. Very good. That was nice. All right, let's continue with the presentation, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, I wanted to present to you the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan. What you have before you is, it's our long-range water planning document. By state law, we need to prepare it every five years. It's quite prescriptive in nature. We generally, high-level, it informs the state of California how well we're doing on our water efficiency targets, as well as comparing the supply and man long-term. It is due to DWR by July 1st and requires adoption by this body. So just a couple of key components that I wanted to highlight for this body. First, this is an important year for the Urban Water Management Plan. We are required to meet a certain efficiency target by the year 2020. And I'm pleased to point out to you that not only have the citizens met that target, but they've been meeting it for the past five years. Additionally, it identifies some of our conservation practices, and I'm also pleased to point out that we have an award-winning water conservation program. One of the benefits of that is that it has extended our water treatment supply for decades The other key component of the Urban Water Management Plan is comparing supplies or our entitlements to the projected demands long-term. I'm also pleased to point out that the city is well-positioned to meet the demands identified within your general plan for the coming decades. One of the aspects of that is that with increased conservation, we're reducing demand projections from our 2015 plan down by another 20%. That said, we continue to- That said, we continue to plan for projects to meet the future. This might be climate change to address quality concerns or capacity concerns long-term. The additional item tonight, there are two actions tonight that we are requesting council consider. The first is the adoption of the urban plan. Second is the adoption of our Water Shortage Contingency Plan. State law requires that we update this plan to align with additional stages of water conservation or water shortage. Overall, this plan contemplates not just things that, like drought, like we're looking at today, but sudden catastrophic emergencies, for instance, the loss of a treatment plant, the inability to receive chemicals, for instance. So it's a progressive plan. It starts with lower-level measures. Stage one, if adopted tonight, would provide some discretion to the city manager to immediately increase, say, outreach activities, requesting citizens to voluntarily conserve water, and increase certainly coordination with city departments to reduce their usage. By the time you get to, say, a sixth stage, for instance, that, for instance, would be health and safety water only, no irrigation, you know, a lot of normal practices would be curtailed. So separate from this urban plan and the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, we felt important to point out to this council some of the current conditions. I think we've all seen how dry it is in the state of California. Just on the, on the slide here, there's a handful of dates. Progressively, parts of the state have been declaring emergencies for water shortage conditions. Recently, the Regional Water Authority passed a resolution asking for local water suppliers to either, or in combination, reduce their consumption by ten percent, or take other steps to help ensure the reliability of the water supply in Folsom and the Lower American River. So this slide here, I, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it. It's complex. Essentially, on the vertical column, it's pointing out the total volume in storage in acre-feet. So the total storage is nominally about one million acre-feet. And then on the bottom column would be the, you know, the months of the year. You'll see in green some of the, the wettest years we've had on record. And then in red, you see some of the drier years on record. Blue identifies where we're trending now. It looks very much like 2015. That said, reclamation is, of course, projections are changing on a daily basis, but they are hopeful to end the year with slightly more storage than what you see depicted on this graph, hopefully around 200,000 acre-feet. So city response. Your city staff has been active. We've already begun shifting water supply and, and diversions from the Lower American River over to the Sacramento River, as well as increasing our groundwater reliance. We think we can remove demands off the Lower American River by upwards of thirty percent. We've been coordinating with DWR and reclamation, and in fact, reclamation includes our reoperation plan in there statewide drought planning activities. We're continuing our two-day week watering. We're doubling our rebates, increasing patrolling to make sure that folks are following the ordinance. Finally, one thing to consider is that if council decides to adopt this plan tonight, the city manager will have increased discretion to make some immediate changes. So finally, again, this is a prescriptive process. There's been some significant outreach. DWR has a process. We have received a couple of comments, and I want this body to know that. The first of the comments was a request for more than fourteen days. Fortunately, we had completed the document in advance, and we're able to put it out on the street an additional week for public review. That's not including the fact that this item was continued. The other, and I just want to highlight it for this body, the other comment, and it was a good comment, came from a local NGO, and they asked us to consider adding language that was a little stronger as it considers climate change long-term, and we accommodated that. So this is the final slide. The recommendation is to conduct the public hearing and then consider adoption separately of the Urban Water Management Plan and the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. And then finally, as it relates to these dry conditions, as appropriate or conditions warrant, we will return. And that completes my presentation, and I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Really an important subject matter that we probably don't spend enough time on here at the city council, never to be taken for granted. Do we have public testimony on the master plan here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one caller.
It's here, please.
May I have the caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Chris Brown. I live in District Five. Professionally, I've worked on water conservation and drought management for more than thirty years. And I want to say, I want to acknowledge that the city staff was very responsive to the comments submitted by ECOS, the Environmental Council of Sacramento, which I helped prepare on the climate consideration. However, what we're facing right now is not just a record drought this year, but the likelihood that we're going to continue to face similar years in the future due to climate change. Waiting for another five years to deal with some of these issues really is not going to be adequate. And the rules put in place by DWR, not by the city, but I think the city can take its own positive action here to do better in the future, gave this fourteen-day comment period, and then the hearing and the vote on the same day. It would be better for this kind of a plan if the hearing was at one meeting and then the vote at a subsequent meeting, or even thirty days later, so that staff and the community have a chance to do the kind of changes that staff voluntarily did this time because of the two-week extension due to the fact that this item was continued. With that, I think ECOS is happy with the changes, but we're going to be addressing much bigger problems as time goes on. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Harris, you've led in this area for a long time. Please.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to commend the Department of Utilities for all their work in sustainability, water conservation. We're pretty exemplary as far as California city goes in terms of lowering our gallons per capita per day number, and we should be very proud of that. Conservation is certainly one response to the drought conditions that we find ourselves in. But this is an extraordinary situation, as Mr. Brown said. Our water managers held, not an emergency meeting, but a special meeting of the Regional Water Authority to discuss what happened this spring, which was unexpected. And that is that we had reasonable snowpack, but it didn't create reasonable inflows into our reservoirs. And we've come up short by many thousands, hundreds of thousands of acre-feet. There's actually 700,000 acre-feet fewer in our reservoirs than we had anticipated. And so it sets us up into a difficult position. Although Folsom Reservoir is about third capacity, we're just entering the hot, dry period, and we don't know what next winter brings. And even if, this was discussed at Regional Water Authority, even if we have a normal precipitation year, if we have the same conditions set up as this year, which is excessively high heat and very dry ground, we may not see the inflows that we need to see into Folsom Reservoir next winter. And we need to prepare for that. We don't know if this is the new normal because of climate change, but you know, if you look at the record heats in Portland and Seattle and Canada, I think it's reasonable to assume that normals are being broken all over the western states. Again, I commend our Department of Utilities because they do have a really good plan for water, water management. We have good water rights, and we're reasonably assured with our groundwater supplies and our surface water rights that we're not going to come up short in the near term, probably not next year. But if this is a prolonged drought, it could get very serious. And this is why water conservation is such an important piece of the puzzle. But the city of Sacramento cannot conserve ourselves out of the problem standing alone. It has to be a regional approach. You know, all the other water districts in the area recognize this, came to consensus, and are, at this point, asking for voluntary conservation measures. By passing the Urban Water Management Plan tonight, we give the city manager authority to go to stage one or level one in our Water Shortage Contingency Plan. So that gives us the leverage to do voluntary conservation measures, to do what Brett had, had discussed, which is increase our incentives for people to do water thrifty maneuvers like smart controllers or swapping out turf for water thrifty plants, for education specifically about how to keep trees alive in the drought, which is extremely important in the city of Sacramento. So we're doing all the right things, but we need to be very mindful about this. I'm, I'm grateful that our Utilities Department is, is very proactive about this. We have a great staff. Roshni with her Sustainability Plan, which is substantial. You know, my thanks to, to Roshni and Brett, to, to Jim Pfeifer at the Regional Water Authority, to Bill Busey, Ann Sanger. Everybody on the team understands the severity of the situation. So, you know, as we move forward, you know, I hope that everybody will pay attention to this. Water is life. Without water, all of the work that we do in the city council becomes less meaningful. You know, you have to have enough water to survive, and I want people to understand that we all have a part in it through conservation. But, you know, our, our city utility staff is taking this very seriously. I'm grateful for their work. I'd also like to thank Robert Dugan. You know, we did get the award from Aqua, which was quite gratifying. He has done a tremendous amount for forest and headwater health, and it, it all ties together. If our headwaters aren't healthy, our reservoir won't fill, and we can come up short. There's a lot to this, of course. We have to keep surface water flowing to take care of the delta, to make sure that salmonids can spawn. You know, it's a complex system. It's very fascinating. I'm a water geek. I won't take any more of your time. But what I would like to do is open and close the public hearing and move the Urban Water Management Plan, and thank staff once again for their hard work.
Thank you very much for great summary. I, I think the, the thing in terms of action that the council needs to be aware of is, as you said, we are granting our city manager we have great faith in, the ability to unilaterally make cutbacks where necessary in order to achieve, what is it again, a ten percent reduction?
Yeah, so that's stage one. If we go to stage two or higher, we'll take a council action. But i- in the, in the near term, the manager can direct staff to work with our constituents to do voluntary water conservation measures. You know, again, frankly, the city of Sacramento has done a great job, but we can do even more, along with our regional partners, to, you know, curtail or, or at least lessen our use of, of surface water out of Folsom Reservoir, to try to keep at least 200,000 acre-feet in there through the winter. Because if we don't keep that much, we could get into trouble next year.
Okay. Very good. Are there other questions? Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd love to second the Chair of the Water Committee's motion on this item, and just say that when I came into water, I have the privilege of working with a lot of state-level water folks and state policy. When I came in, I was like, sit me down, tell me what I need to know. And they were like, no, no, trust the staff at the city of Sacramento and the Water Forum. Like, they're some of the best in the state. They know what they're doing. And like, every step of the way, it's been really gratifying to, to see the expertise and action and to really appreciate just in what good standing we're in as a region and as a city because of the work that the city has done to really be a good manager of the water and really plan ahead for the unpredictable. And I'll repeat a little bit of what I said at Water Committee before about how glad I was to hear that there have been ongoing conversations with the environmental community and with just the community stakeholders in general, and how important I think that's going to be as we move forward into this uncharted territory and unpredictability, so that we can work together to ensure we have the best data and are doing everything we can. So I'm happy to second the motion and commend Bill and his team and everyone else involved in this report for the work that they've done to get us where we are today. Thank you.
That's excellent. Again, really important. Let's make sure we dedicate more time to the subject matter, not just workshop-wise, but as there are things that you need to really tee up for action for the city council that is significant, and it's all significant. Let's make sure that every, at least a couple times a year, we are bringing this subject matter back before the body. All right?
Mayor, one, one more quick comment.
Yeah.
I'd just like to say that I really appreciate the new members on the Water Committee. So Councilmember Valenzuela and Councilmember Vang are very engaged in this kind of deep subject, you know? There's a lot to it. Water issues are complex, and they have already demonstrated that they're very into the subject, and I'm very happy to have them on board on the Water Committee.
That's excellent. Thank you very much. All right, is there a vote, a receiving file on this? What's the posture?
Yes, if I, if I may call the roll.
Yes, please. Go, go.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right, thank you. That passes nine to nothing. Item fifty-two, the ADU issue. Who's presenting?
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Garrett Norman, Associate Planner, and I'm here to present the city's proposed accessory dwelling unit ordinance. The ordinance before you codifies into city code the city's current ADU regulation, emergency ordinance that was adopted by council in December of 2019. The purpose of the emergency ordinance was to make the city's ADU regulations consistent with a series of state laws that went into effect on January first of 2020. Staff presented this ordinance to the Planning and Design Commission on April twenty-second, in which the commission passed a motion forwarding a recommendation of approval. Staff then presented the ordinance to the Law and Legislation Committee on May eighteenth. The LLL Committee passed a motion recommending approval of the ordinance with the following three changes. The first was to make the allowable size for attached ADUs to be no larger than what is required by state law. The second was to exempt no more than 800 square feet from lot coverage, which is the minimum allowed to be consistent with state law. And lastly, to require a parking space where permissible under state law. All three of these changes have been added to the ordinance before you tonight, or this afternoon. However, staff is recommending the council consider removing the last requirement for a parking space, because when the state's limitations are applied to a map, specifically the limitation that parking cannot be required if within a half mile of public transit, roughly ninety percent of the city is covered. Looking at the screen before you right now, the areas in blue are within a half mile of public transit, which includes RT bus routes and light rail stations. And so the areas in blue is where we would not be allowed to require a parking space. So the areas in color is where we could require parking space. The areas in color is even further reduced when you look at the yellow areas, because those are the residential zones where we would see ADUs being constructed. Additionally, staff thinks it creates equal fairness for all residents in the city because providing an off-street parking space could be site design and cost prohibitive for some. Staff has received correspondence from the community, both in support of the proposed ordinance and in opposition. Those in support appreciate the city's streamlining efforts to help make building ADUs easier, and those in opposition argue the city's development standards should not exceed what is mandated by state law. Staff is recommending the coun- the council pass a motion and approve the ordinance attached to the staff report with an amendment to remove the one-space minimum parking requirement for ADUs. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I have three callers.
Okay, go ahead. Vice Mayor Shenier, can you take over for?
Sure.
Multiple items, thanks.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Adro Okoro, and I am the Policy Director for the Sacramento Housing Alliance. While the Law and Ledge Committee has requested that one parking space be required for each- ADU, the Sacramento Housing Alliance supports staff recommendations to keep the no parking requirement because it will help to reduce construction costs and streamline the permitting process. Staff has recommended the council consider the practicality of requiring an off-street parking space for ADUs, given the limited area within the city limits and the key strategies of the 2040 general plan update to remove minimum parking requirements for all developments. Addressing the affordable housing crisis within the city requires a comprehensive approach, including expanding the use of accessory dwelling units along with supporting the development of new affordable apartment homes. In addition, the council should direct staff to develop programs, including grants and zero-interest loans for low and moderate income homeowners to develop ADUs on their property. Certain income homeowners remain in their homes and support from this rental income while also providing new rental housing opportunities. In addition, the city could provide loans where repayment is deferred or forgiven if the homeowner agrees to make the ADU available at an affordable rent to lower-income households for a specified period of time. We recommend these strategies be added to the city's current draft housing element. Thank you for considering our comments. We welcome the opportunity to work with staff on these recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Dori Genezas. I'm a district three resident and I spend most of my professional tenure researching ADUs and trying to figure out how to bolster ADU production in the state. I'm generally supportive of this ordinance, but I am disappointed to see the changes to staff's initial provisions, specifically the imposition of parking requirements, reducing the maximum unit size limit, and altered lot coverage requirements. We know from research that ADUs are a great way to quickly and relatively cheaply produce new housing. The data shows that these units are generally affordable by design and tend to rent for less than conventional rental units. We should make it as easy and cheap as possible for family-sized ADUs to be built by removing the parking requirement and ideally increasing the maximum size limit as was initially proposed by staff. Thanks to staff for all their work here and thank you, councilmembers, for the time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Dove Caden. I'm calling on behalf of Secog. Secog has been supporting our local government member agencies over the last three years to enact policy changes that facilitate the construction of ADUs. We strongly believe that ADUs have an opportunity to play a meaningful role in supplying relatively affordable infill rental stock in places that we really desperately need new housing. City of Sacramento has been a regional leader on ADUs with the interim ordinance going beyond what is required by state law as it means of actually promoting them. We do have some concerns about the proposed permanent ordinance in that it's rolling back some of the specific code language that the city was really going beyond the state law on. And while the state standard is great, it will certainly continue to facilitate ADUs. We believe it's important for the city to be a model in the region for going beyond just what is required on those specific components like max square footage, like lot coverage, and in particular, parking. Secog provided a verbal testimony earlier this year on the general plan update, key strategies. We supported the city's strategy to eliminate parking minimum citywide. Parking minimums can drive up the cost of new housing. They often encourage a more auto-centric built environment. This is especially the case for ADUs. ADUs tend to have a smaller household size. They have pretty fairly minimal parking impacts, really. And on a personal note, I built an ADU on my property in 2019. I rented it affordably at 80% AMI. I would not have been able to build that ADU if I was required to build a parking space because of space and cost considerations. So parking minimum for me would have meant one less affordable unit in Sacramento. For these reasons, we recommend that city council adopt city staff's original proposal for lot coverage and parking requirements. Thanks again for your time and for your leadership on ADUs.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor, I have no more callers.
Great, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chenier. You know, I think that we arrived at a good compromise of Law and Ledge. We had a pretty lengthy discussion. As far as the parking minimums go, I think there's maybe a misconception out there. The state law, as you saw on the map that Garrett Norman put up, the state law requires that we not condition parking space for ADUs in almost the entire city. There's only a very, very small bit of land where we could, under state law, ask that a builder of an ADU dedicate a parking space. It's really statistically insignificant and I think that I've come to agree with staff that we could go ahead and let that piece go, even though I argued for it at Law and Ledge, to just comply with the state law. It would affect so few units being built that I think it's insignificant. And I think it does create equity amongst all the areas of the city where somebody might choose to build an ADU. Other than that, I think that our lot coverage requirement, the massing, the setbacks, are all commensurate with facilitating the building of ADUs. You know, and I speak from experience, I'm currently building one. And I have learned a lot in the exercise of building an ADU, how it works in a single-family R1-zone neighborhood, what parking actually means on the street. These are all real concerns and they have to be approached logically and not philosophically, in my opinion. Anyway, I think we've arrived at a good conclusion, but I'd like to open and close the public hearing and move the staff recommendation with the further recommendation from staff that we remove the parking requirement for ADUs throughout the entire city. Again, because I think, you know, the state law has already done most of the work and this just makes it equitable throughout the city.
Great, thank you. Mr. Gera.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Harris, I want to just confirm that we are keeping the size of the ADUs that we agreed to in Law and Ledge as moving forward and the lot coverage. Is that correct?
Well, yes, that is, Garrett. You can go ahead and corroborate.
Yes, that is correct. The changes made at Law and Ledge are incorporated in the attached ordinance.
Good, good, thanks. I just wanted to make clear that because I think in your motion, you said the staff recommendation, but as drafted in the staff report. I agree, you know, Councilmember Harris, that we came to, I think, a very good compromise there and particularly on ensuring that as we move forward with increasing the amount of ADUs, that we're being sensitive to the size of the ADUs in communities. In some of our older neighborhoods, some of the homes are, you know, 1,000 square feet already, 1,200 square feet. So an ADU might be even larger than the original home. So I think that making sure that we're managing the lot size and the size of the ADU has come to a good compromise, given the fact that we have a very diverse city. I would like to ask staff that within a year, we come back and look at this parking issue because while statistically, I think your point is correct, that it'd be a very small area, I want to make sure that as we move forward with this new policy, that we are able to manage any potential parking issues because they are real issues. We've got some streets in some of our communities that were the original suburbs back in the 1920s that are very narrow and if there is a number of ADUs that are installed, that could affect, you know, what the available, what the impact is on the street. So with that, I'll second the motion and ask staff to come back and see and report back on what kind of parking impacts have or have not occurred over this last year.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lulowee.
Thank you. You know, initially, when this came up, it was being very productive as far as creating more units, livable units. But through this, you know, five, six months that I've been on this council, you know, this is something that I've thought about a lot. And I get concerned when you talk about certain areas of our city that it's much older homes, you have senior citizens that are kind of retiring, they want to live on that street the way they've lived on it for about 30, 40 years. And then I'm...
Conlon, I called yesterday, calling again today. I'm going to be taking...
Mr. Conlon, go on mute. Thank you. Mr. Lulowee, go ahead.
I thought he was calling me. So then, I'm a little bit concerned that if we have, you know, a very experienced developer that would literally come into these communities, buy, you know, two or three parcels, and then now starts, you know, building and building these ADUs and what have you, is that going to change the format of that community, number one? Number two, with these ADUs, you know, depending on how high they can go, I think there's a max to it. And if I am right next door and I have a swimming pool, there's a certain amount of privacy that I'm going to require. Is that something we need to address at this point and to make sure we cover all the bases before we make our residents in city of Sacramento somewhat nervous about what is their neighbor that's going to, that they're going to do, that's going to affect pretty much their property? And I know, Jeff, you indicated that, Councilmember Harris, you indicated that you're actually working on one. And we briefly have talked about it a long time ago. But those are some of the major concerns that I have about the privacy factor, you know, 1,200 square feet, two bed, I mean, 1,000 square feet, two-bedroom. So I'm a little bit uncomfortable with this as far as what we're asking for our residents to deal with.
So Sean, if I might reply, first, it's already state law and we basically have to comply with it. You know, we're not going to be able to countermand what was passed at the state. As far as height goes, yes, privacy is a very big concern. But, you know, you can by right build a two-story over your house. In the city of Sacramento, there are design review requirements. Privacy is an issue. I can tell you that some years ago, a neighbor, two doors down, built a second story and I felt very invaded in my privacy. There's a window that looks down in my backyard, but he was allowed to build the two-story and I've gotten used to it. Now I find that I am building a second story over my detached garage. I was sensitive to my neighbors. I only put in one window that was obscure that might look at part of their yard and not to the neighbor in the back. You know, these are normal concerns in building and not specific to ADUs. And they have to be addressed, but we have to comply with state law. That being said, I wanted to make one more comment. Having built an ADU and having been a builder in the city for 35 years now, I personally would not choose to build an ADU without an allocated parking spot because I know that it can cause real stress in the neighborhood. So that's my own feeling about it. It's more practical. You know, if I was building an ADU right near a transit line or right adjacent to bus line, it would be more practical to not have to allocate parking for an ADU. But simply put, if you want to rent the ADU and have a successful renter, the fact is that most people at some point need a car. There are certainly some lots where it can be accommodated and some lots where it cannot. But state law is state law. Thank you.
Ms. Valenzuela.
Thank you, yeah. And that's a perfect entry into what my comments were going to be, which is that, you know, the task before is to how we make state law work with our local needs. And I think what's so stressful about all of the changes that are being considered is that if you look at any one of them in isolation, you think, oh my goodness, what is this going to mean for parking? Or, oh my goodness, what is this going to mean for transportation access? And what I know is coming and what I commend the planners and community development for getting ready to do is this robust engagement process this fall and winter to really look at how all of this intersects together and to make any changes necessary before we finalize the zoning and the general plan and start doing all of that additional work. Like, one of my concerns is, what if these units aren't more affordable? And so I've talked a lot about inclusionary, I've talked a lot about different fees and structures we could use to look at to make sure this isn't just a profit machine for developers and that they don't build, you know, four units on a lot and charge 800,000 for each of them. And we're like, wait a minute, that didn't help with our housing shortage necessarily. So I think that conversation is to come. Like, one of the issues with parking that we've tested in our district, for example, is some buildings aren't allowed residential parking permits. And so what we've done is created residential parking zones. And then you can't get a parking permit if you're in certain buildings because the idea was they have less parking requirements, so you should either not have a car or fit in the existing lot. Well, not all the tenants who move into those buildings are aware that they can't get a parking permit. So then they move in and they're like, wait a minute, where does my car go? There's no space for me. And so I think there's a lot of lessons that we've learned about what we should be requiring and what we, how we communicate. Because if I knew I was going to move into an ADU that didn't have a parking spot and that I wasn't going to get a parking permit for a street, say if we did residential permitting, I just, I would know that that was a choice I was making if I moved into that unit. And that could be an informed choice and process that we work out as we do this deeper engagement this fall. But I know I'm hearing a lot from my district, a lot of concerns, a lot of concerns, frankly, that are with state law, that we can't do anything about, some concerns that are about what about these intersecting issues of affordability, livability, transportation systems. And I keep saying, you know, I want to do this fall, really partner with the planners to figure out how to make this work neighborhood by neighborhood. And I think that's something each of us can help with from each of our districts. So I'm going to be supporting this ordinance today and really looking forward to that deep engagement and further changes to come as we continue to round out our general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any more hands up, so we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby? Mayor Pro Tem Ashby? We'll come back to Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Lulowee?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby? And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes.
Vindy, I'm a yes. Thank you.
If that motion carries, let's go ahead and move to items 54 and 55 if we can put those together on the presentations. And let me ask if people are okay if we waive the presentations on those. Is there a challenge with that? Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yeah, sorry, Vice Mayor, I did have a question to raise. Sorry, my video is frozen. I hope you can still hear me. Okay. Okay, awesome. It's on item 55. I was looking at the numbers here. Well, first, I had a question for staff about wanting to clarify the sidewalk repair requirements, if that applies.
Let me do this then. Let's go ahead and do 54 and move that out of the way. Does anyone have any questions or challenges? I'm going to go ahead and suggest that we waive the presentation and move the item. Second.
Would you open and close, and would you open and close the public hearing, please?
Open and close the public hearing. That was Mr. Gera seconding it. Please call the roll on 54.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Lulowee?
Yeah.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg?
Yes.
And for the record, I have no callers.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call that unanimous and move on to 55. Councilmember Valenzuela, and let me turn this back over to the mayor.
Great, thank you. Yeah, staff, I have a quick question. Suzanne, if you wouldn't mind, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to ask you this before. I got my agenda review done kind of late. Are commercial and residential property owners both responsible for sidewalks or is that a condition that's unique to residential property owners?
I might have to ask my Public Works colleagues to weigh in, but I believe that it's for any, the same, the requirements are the same all over the city. So it's roadway, state highway regulation based?
This is my mayor and council. This is Ryan Moore with your Department, Public Works Department. That answer from Suzanne's correct. It's equally applicable to residential and commercial properties.
Okay, and is this something that we've always done in terms of charging property owners for sidewalk maintenance or was that a change that was made?
Since 1978 is when the ordinance, as I understand it, began. Yes.
Okay, thank you. And last question, and then I have a few comments and a question from my colleagues. Is it required when someone's sidewalk is repaired? And I've just heard this story anecdotally from constituents, which is why I want to check. Is it always required that they tear out the sidewalk and replace it? Are things like grinding down edges that are protruding are replacing with alternative materials allowed?
Go ahead, Brian.
Again, when we get a, when we're on notice that there's a hazard that might create a...
Again, when we get a, when we're on notice that there's a hazard that might create a liability for the city, we have a crew, our in-source concrete crew, that will go out and do an assessment. Normally, what you'll find is that there's a tree root creating that. So we actually have an arborist that's attached to that section. They will do an assessment and determine if sidewalk needs to be removed, if there's a modification that's necessary, if there's, it's, in short, each situation's going to be a little bit different.
Okay, thank you for answering those questions. I was a little startled with like the amount of some of these assessments. And I recognize that, you know, we can't really undo charges that have already been levied and we need to correct this. So I'm more interested in moving forward. I do have a sign of, I guess, foundational issue with us charging property owners for what's a public good. And was just curious, and I also just want to make sure we're being as judicious as we can with requirements to tear out and replace concrete, since it is hands down one of the most polluting industries in California. And I want us to reduce the amount of new concrete that we are using as much as possible and even looking for alternatives. So I wonder, and this is more a question for my colleagues, but moving forward, if we might entertain the idea of revisiting the practice to look towards something a little bit more equitable and sustainable moving forward. I'm just, I'm worried about property owners who might not be by high income, who get a really high invoice for repairs to sidewalk. And I'm also just in general thinking about, you know, whether or not the city should have responsibility for a public good like this. So just putting that out. And I don't know, staff, if you have comments on that, but I'm curious if my colleagues would entertain bringing something like that back in the future.
Councilmember Valenzuela, part of the very brief presentation that I had did address some of the mitigating efforts that Public Works was putting into play, especially this past year. They made several temporary repairs at no cost to the property owners. They also offered 144 deferrals between three and 12 months to allow more time. And in many cases, because of the shortage of construction material, the property owner had a lot longer time to try to mitigate the repairs themselves. And then we in finance, we also offer no interest payment plans for people so that, so that, you know, to avoid the assessment process. So those things we have kind of put into play, you know, to try to, to try to reduce the burden on the citizen.
I really appreciate that, Susan and Ryan. And I just, yeah, I guess this is probably just a bigger policy question on if it's, if we think it's best policy for us to just put that burden on property owners in general, specifically residential property owners. And so that's still a question that I have, but I do appreciate the measures you've all taken this year. And yeah, and obviously, I'm not calling into question whether we should pass this measure around assessments for work that's already been done and bills that have already been spent. But yeah, curious if any of my colleagues have any thoughts or comments on that.
You know, Mr. Moore, I know you're all very busy, but it might be helpful like to produce a memo just that describes the history a little bit of how we got to this policy, right? And what, and whether it was ever different in the past, just to, I think, better understand. Obviously, it could be a huge cost to the city if we were to take it all on ourselves. But is, should there be any differentiation between something that might be caused by the natural wear and tear of a residence versus something outside of the residence that caused the sidewalk to crack? I just, I would love to see a little bit of history on this so that I can understand how we got to this, to this particular policy.
Can I just chime in for a quick second?
Sure.
I would, it's a great conversation to have. As Mr. Moore knows, very, very, very slippery slope. Because what you are going to get into is a causal argument about who planted the trees and who approved the trees. And I don't know if Councilmember Valenzuela's constituents that are talking to her about it are Notomus folks or not, but Notomus notoriously has the wrong trees planted throughout. And many, many, many homeowners have had to pay for sidewalk repairs out front. I've thought it for 10 years. Sometimes you can be successful and sometimes not. But it is citywide, a tremendous expense that we can't absorb. And so it has been passed on to homeowners. But the fairness of it, the more you dig into it, is quite challenging. So I don't disagree with the mayor's request. I just would call my colleagues. It's a, it is a really challenging topic, seems simple. It's not.
So, yeah, and I'm not asking for a public discussion. I don't necessarily hear Councilmember Valenzuela, maybe at some point. But why don't we just get a little background first? The council member can digest it, we can all digest it and, and, you know, see if anybody wants to take the discussion further.
Sure, we would be happy to provide that background.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anything else that on this, on this item? All right, let's call the roll, please.
Mr. Mayor, we need to still open and close the public hearing.
I'll go ahead and open and close the public hearing, move the item.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yeah.
Vice Mercheneer?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg?
Yes.
And for the record, we had no callers.
Okay, thank you. That passes. We now have item 56. Who's doing item 56?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Jorge from the City Auditor's Office will be doing this along with myself.
No, this is, this is a different item.
Ms. Barnes, a different item.
Oh, I apologize.
Ms. Barnes, what is your opinion on the 30-foot easement for public highways?
And if Jorge really wants to do that, I'm sure we can make a talk.
I'd like to know also, considering this is my.
Thank you.
Yes.
You always love volunteers. It's wonderful. Thank you. Okay.
This is Mike Robertson, Baker Williams Engineering Group. I believe, uh, surveyor Jimmy Byram was going to present this. Is he on?
Mr. Byram is online. Looks like he's trying to unmute.
I'm here, yes, I keep getting disconnected. Anyway, would you like me to present?
I would ask Mr. Laloie if there are any challenges to this or if he'd like a presentation or move it since it's in his district.
No challenges on this, moving it forward.
And I have no callers on this item.
Sorry, guys.
Up to you, Sean, if you want to, if you want to waive the presentation and move the item.
I think, having heard Councilmember Laloie move the item, just opening and closing the public hearing, I will second it.
Thank you.
So Councilmember Laloie opened and closed the public hearing. Mayor Protem Ashby was the second. Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yeah.
Vice Mercheneer?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes. Vice Mayor, you still got to gather?
Yeah, sure. Let's go ahead. Mr. City Auditor, I believe you're up. Item 57.
Jorge had some technical difficulties. He's just joining us.
Yeah, he's joining right now.
Sorry about that. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, you're good.
Fantastic. All right, I'm assuming you're on my item.
Yes, we are.
Let me just load up the presentation. Can you see my slides?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, so, good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. Jorge Sogeta, the City Auditor. With me today is Prish Dharari, who was primarily responsible for this project. Since we are bypassing the Budget and Audit Committee, we are asking that the council, by a two-thirds vote, temporarily suspend Council Rules and Procedures, Chapter 15b.1. If passed by two-thirds, we would recommend that the council approve the report. So we can have the two-thirds vote first.
All right, is there a motion? Two move. I have a motion. Second, anyone?
Jennings, the second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, I assume you have no callers on this two-thirds vote? So you want to call the roll? And council members, this is just to hear this item as we speak.
Mayor Protem Ashby? Councilmember Laloie? Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yeah.
Vice Mercheneer?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg?
Yes.
Thank you. And that was to waive the two-thirds vote.
Okay, Mr. City Auditor, go ahead.
Thank you very much. So I'd first like to start by thanking the Attorney's Office, the Human Resources Department, and the staff from the City Manager's Office for their assistance and cooperation in conducting this analysis and putting together this report. In fact, they will be also presenting on this, towards the end of this, as the sixth chapter in our report was actually put together by the staff of the City Manager's Office. And so we'll begin with the one finding that we have in this report, which deals with a data integrity concern that we identified when going through this information. It's in regards to how the city captures its hired applicant's information. We came to realize that neither dataset was complete. And therefore, we are making some recommendations to address that going forward so that when we do this type of analysis in the future, we will have better and more complete information to work with. And management is in agreement with these recommendations. Chapter two deals with our analysis on city applicants for open city positions. This first graphic focuses in on the gender diversity of the applicants that we've received. You will notice that there's a green bar on here that represents our proportion of city residents. The blue bars are the information related to our city applicants from 2019 to 2021. I will mention that 2021 is not a complete year, and so we need to take that into account. It's only about half a year. And in addition to that, in 2020, the city implemented a hiring freeze. And as you well know, we also entered into a pandemic. And so those variables would also potentially have an impact on some of the results. But as you can see, in 2019, the applicants consisted of approximately 50% female and 49% male, which is in line with our city residents. And there have been some changes since then. When we look at this same information in regards to applicants for ethnicity, there are some things that stand out to me. You know, some additional things may stand out to others. But some things that I wanted to call some attention to are, for example, that the biggest delta that you can see between where city residents are and where our applicant pool consists of from an ethnicity perspective is with our Hispanic or Latino applicants. Where our city residents are at about 31%, and our applicants have ranged from 18 to 20%. That does appear to be on an upward trend, given our currently available information. But if you look at, for example, the Black or African-American applicants, you can see that although the initial information from 2019 indicates that they were in greater numbers when compared to the proportion of city residents, that number has been declining. And so it's something that we probably want to continue to pay attention to as we continue to gather and conduct this type of analysis. And the other thing that jumped out to me is that there is also a delta that we want to keep in mind for our Asian applicants when compared to the proportion of Asian city residents, where the city residents are at 16% and the applicants have been hovering around 11%. Now, when we look at this information a little bit differently and focus in on all sworn department positions, the information does shift a little bit. And you can see that the trend for white is trending down to where it is very similar to what our city residents' proportion of our population is. And in regards to Hispanic, that one also is trending up to where the 2020, 2021 information seems to approximate the proportion of city residents. And then, like we saw in the previous slide, there still is a delta in regards to our Asian applicants for sworn police department positions. And in regards to Black or African-American, that has a recent jump up that just barely exceeded our city residents' population. When we look at the gender and ethnic composition of the California Firefighters Candidate Testing Center eligibility list, you can see that the eligibility list that the city relies on to hire our firefighters is not as diverse as our city resident population. And so that's going to present some challenges in encouraging an applicant pool that the city can select from that is reflective of our city residents. Likewise, the amount of eligible firefighter candidates that are on this state list, which we rely on, is quite low. So increasing the number of females represented in our sworn firefighters is also going to continue to be a challenge if we continue to rely primarily on this state eligibility list. When we look at the ethnic and racial composition of eligible applicants for management positions, we also see some changes in some of the patterns. We still see that delta for Hispanic or Latino that seems to be one of the larger ones that we have been dealing with. But in regards to the delta that we saw in the prior slides for Asians, that one has been reduced, if not eliminated, given the most recent information, where we went from 13% of our applicant pool being Asian for management positions, and it increased to 16%. In this slide, it kind of summarizes some of the information that we just went through. You can see highlighted in yellow what our city residents' proportions are of the different ethnicities and do a quick comparison to some of those different key areas that we mentioned, such as all eligible applicants, full-time career eligible applicants, full-time career management employees, sworn police, and sworn fire, the state eligibility list. We then move on to an analysis that we did on those individuals that we hired. During the period of July 1st, 2018, through January 31st, 2021, we hired over 2,100 employees, of which 766 were full-time regular employees. And that's what this analysis will focus on going forward. So this is a similar format to what we just looked at with an additional piece of information. And that is what is circled here on the left in red. We've added a column for the regular full-time city employee current proportions. And so our total regular full-time city employees are currently 30% female, 69% male. And our city residents are at, as we previously mentioned, 50% female and 49% male. And for those individuals that were hired into regular full-time positions from 2019 to 2021 were as shown on the left-hand side. When we look at that same full-time regular employees that were hired from an ethnicity perspective, you can see that we still have, you know, that delta that we've seen in the Hispanic or Latino ethnicity reemerge. And you see that there has been a downward trend in the number of, or in the percentage of white employees that are being hired by the city of Sacramento. Also, you can see a steep increase in the number of Asians that were hired, which begins to approximate that percentage of city residents that currently makes up the city of Sacramento Asian resident proportion. In this graphic, we look at the ethnic and racial composition of regular full-time employees hired between January of 2018 and 2021 by department. And one of the things that I highlighted here is something that stood out to me, which was that Public Works and the Youth Parks and Community Enrichment Departments have, over that time period, seemed to approximate in their hiring proportions that are very similar to those of our city residents. And so that's just something that stood out to me. But obviously, there's a lot of information here that you can digest at a later time, and it may point to some additional areas of interest or that may be explored further. When we look at the gender and ethnic racial composition of full-time management employees, one of the things that we noticed is that the full-time management employees that have been hired have been more leaning towards the female proportion than the male proportion. When we look at the gender and ethnic racial composition of all police and fire department sworn employees hired between those dates, you can see that the composition overall of our total sworn police and fire employees has been trending towards proportions that are becoming more similar to that of our general residential proportions. And so that is, I believe, in line with the intent of the city. When we look at the ethnic racial composition of newly hired employees in this summary slide, we can compare our city residents over time to those different categories that we had previously mentioned. And again, I think one of the takeaways that you can see here is that overall, when we're looking at all hired employees of two thousand one hundred and thirty-three, the proportions are not that far off from our city residents, which are highlighted in yellow. And that when compared to our current employee composition, even when we do these subsets, it appears to be more similar to the proportions of our city residents than our current employee composition. When we look at employee separations, we notice that there were approximately twenty-five hundred employees that were separated from the city, of which seven hundred and fifty-seven were regular full-time employees, and that's what we will be focusing on for the analysis. And here, we have a similar chart to what we saw before, where we can do a comparison to our regular full-time employee proportions and our city residents' proportions. One of the things that stands out to me is when you see these green bars that represent our separations from 2019 to 2021, bars that exceed the yellow bar would indicate that we may be bleeding employees of that ethnicity. And it's so something to, you know, keep in mind and pay attention to. But it also needs to be taken with a grain of salt as hiring, if it's in equal proportions, could offset this potential impact, even if it exceeds our regular full-time employee proportions. In terms of what types of releases we had, the vast majority of them were resignation and service retirements, where forty-five point two percent were resignations, service retirements were forty-one percent. And when you look at the grand total in terms of the ethnicities that left the city under those full-time positions, they are in the proportions highlighted in yellow. Although there's a lot of numbers here and a lot to digest, you know, this could be a useful tool to identify areas to do further analysis. For example, when looking at the releases, you can see, circled here in red, that black, African-American, twenty-nine percent of our releases were under the black or African-American employee grouping, which is greater than the grand total, which could be an indicator of an area that may warrant some additional analysis. When we look at the gender composition of all police and fire department sworn employees that were separated, you can see the detailed portion of male and female for each department, as well as the ethnicities of those individuals that have left the city for our sworn positions in the police and fire department. When we look at the gender composition of regular full-time management employees, we can see that more males in management positions are leaving the city than females. And likewise, the proportion of employees of color that are leaving are lower than the proportions of many of our ethnicities that currently comprise our percentages of those particular ethnicities that we're looking at. When you look at the summary page, similar to what we did on the other two subjects, you can quickly compare, again, our city residents to the different categories that we went over, such as separated employees, separated regular full-time employees, sworn and fire, and see how it compares to the city's resident proportions. And that concludes the summary of some of the information that is contained in the report. Obviously, we have a lot more detailed information contained in the report that may be of interest to the council. At this point, I would like to hand it over to Ami Barnes, our Diversity Manager, who is going to walk through some of the many wonderful and great efforts that the city is currently undergoing to encourage a workforce that is more reflective of the diversity of our residents and our community. Ami, if you're available, we're ready to go.
All right. Thank you so much, Jorge, I appreciate that. Mayor and members of the council and Vice Mayor, I apologize for the, I was so excited, I jumped the gun on the agenda. So in the next few minutes, just want to quickly go over some high-level objectives and give you a quick update, and then have a response to the city's council's immediate strategies that we could engage in, which was a follow-up from our presentation during the Workforce Diversity and Salary Trend Report. So broadly, our objectives for sustainable initiatives for our workforce equity center on workforce diversity, workforce inclusion, and sustainability. So this is to meet the needs of our staff currently in developing a citywide comprehensive and a sustained approach that is required not just for closing data gaps, but also for combating systemic barriers and moving us toward workforce equity. And we can go ahead and move to the next slide, thank you. The sustained strategies for achieving workforce equity are primarily what we have been working on since October of 2020. Even during the pandemic, we have been launching the Race, Gender, and Equity Action Plan that grounds this work in terms of applying a racial equity analysis and moving us towards workforce equity. So the Race, Gender, and Equity Action Process elements include workplace culture, where we are operationalizing racial equity through equity department teams. If you saw in your report, we have all of our departments and charter offices who have established equity teams. They are now engaged in filling out a forty-three equity point department assessment tool, which is specifically designed in six different areas to highlight the efforts on a workforce continuum from outreach to leadership and accountability, to assessment, to hiring practices, then leveraging and analyzing current and creating new data streams. And it's actually out of the council here in creating this report that this will be a great tool for us to do either further analysis on departures and understand how we can retain our talent as well. It is also set to establish goals, track progress, and focus on accountability. The equity teams, through their forty-three equity point department assessments, will also be completing department annual progress reports in addition to the workforce and salary trend report that is conducted out of the city auditor's office. It is also, as you may recall, the fourteen outcomes and action strategies, which is to share that collective and coordinated vision and to also de-silo this work so that the equity teams can work and highlight and uplift best practices. And again, supporting and engaging staff capacity on racial equity, which we follow the national best practice in normalizing, organizing, and operationalizing the GARE National Best Practice, which is the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. Then we'll move on to the next slide. And so the recommended action items, as a follow-up to the January presentation, is in alignment and in direct consult, after consulting with Human Resources and other key staff leaders in the City Manager's Office, it is intended to align with the implementation year, which is the year that we're beginning right now, of the Race, Gender, and Equity Action Plan. It is also to facilitate analysis and leverage the current data and collection efforts, especially as we build new ones. But it is also, and I will really want to try to underscore that third arrow, which is the intersection in relation to other actions, policies, and programs. The biggest challenge that we have is the siloed work and really trying to develop a shared definition, shared approach, and shared coordinated efforts so that we can uplift the best practices that are happening across the city, and also address those gaps and systemic barriers that we are identifying, so that we're not replicating or exacerbating them. So the successful growth of our equity, diversity, inclusion, as well as other characteristics, are linked specifically to strategic plans, leadership, accountability, measurement, and training. And so these six action items, we will cover right now. The first one is to take, for, to take action to formalize the Citywide Manual on Recruitment, Selection, and Hiring. We took about approximately two years to develop a citywide manual on recruitment, selection, and hiring. And so it would be a great action strategy to move us forward, is to develop this as a citywide procedure for all city departments, managers, and supervisors. This is linked to our Race, Gender, and Equity Action Plan Outcomes six and seven. The second one is to consider authorization of one-point-one FTE, Limited Term Employment Outreach Specialists, that would work directly in collaboration with my Office of, Office of Diversity and Equity in Human Resources. And this directly correlates to the Race, Gender, and Equity Action Plan Outcomes two, four, eight, and fourteen. And this is centering around a lot of the data that you saw that Jorge shared this afternoon, and when you dive deeper into the report, how this outreach strategy could benefit us greatly in moving our applicant pool and, in addition, workforce attainment. The third one is Mayor and Council Capacity Building Training and Continuing Training Support for Internal Workforce Equity and the Citywide Racial Equity Initiative. Can't underscore this enough, that not only is workforce attainment and hiring important, we must develop the staff to understand what it needs to retain and create a workplace inclusion environment for staff to stay and be retained in the city of Sacramento. And this one relates to the Race, Gender, and Equity Action Plan Outcome Number thirteen. The fourth one is Charter Offices and City Departments Provide Support for the Citywide Mentorship Program for City Employees, relating to our Outcomes ten and twelve. This is not only anecdotal information, but we saw this in the 2020 DEI survey that was also done by the City Auditor's Office relating to staff understanding what it needs, what they need to promote, to grow, and seek professional opportunities so that they have a career development plan here within the city. And then moving on to number five, Mayor and City Council Support for Review and Determination of All Potential Barriers and Minimum Qualifications That Would Be Recommended From the Citywide Classification and Compensation Study. This is probably one of the most systemic endeavors regarding workforce that the city has undertaken in quite some time. There, I believe that a class and comp study of this magnitude, which has been supported by the City Council and the City Manager's Office, is something that has not been done in almost seventeen, eighteen years. So this is probably one, this is going to yield a great deal, I believe, of information and data, as well as recommendations to identify unintentional and artificial barriers in minimum qualifications for all classifications for our staff. And then number six, Mayor and Council Encourage City Employee Resource Groups. This is probably one of the most organic, and in the last year, we have seen council members support employee resource groups. This is, relates to Outcomes ten and twelve. This helps with citywide mentoring and retention, but it also empowers staff, who are our greatest ambassadors, to say that the city is a place of inclusion, that it prioritizes diversity and equity, and want to lift up the former council member Steve Hansen, who supported and planted the seed for the LGBT ERG, and council member Mai Vang, who lent her support and time for the emerging Asian Pacific Islander ERG as well. So we can see that, I think that that's going to be a great strategy for us to create a sense of community among the city staff. And of course, that endeavor and model is the African-American Employee Leadership Council, who is, which is a phenomenal employee resource group, a community leader in advocacy for African-American staff within the city staff. So we want to replicate these best practices and create community. So engaging Mayor and Council in this endeavor could be a great strategy for us. And I believe that concludes our presentation, and happy to answer any questions and engage in any dialogue.
All right, do we have public testimony on the item? If we don't, let me ask sort of the big-picture question for the Sacramento resident out there who may be watching some of this, or we're not. Are we going in the right direction when it comes to our city workforce? All right, there's a lot of numbers here, and I note, for example, when it comes to gender, that, and newly hired regular full-time employees, 2021 was a better year than 2020 or 2019 in terms of more women hired into the city workforce. It's fifty-six percent, but I just, you know, the sample size may be not large enough to really detect a trend, but that, that looks good to me. Then I look at race and ethnicity, and I'm just trying to interpret it all here. Are we going in the right direction when it comes to hiring?
I think from my perspective and based on our analysis, I would say that, yes, we are headed in the right direction. I think the efforts that the city has engaged in to encourage a workforce that is more reflective of the community is starting to bear fruit, and we're starting to see some of the benefits of the additional outreach that we've had into our community, and so that is very encouraging. When you look at the applicant pool that we analyzed, you know, I think one of the questions that was raised during our prior presentation was, well, do we have an applicant pool that is reflective of our community? And I think based on the analysis as a whole, it does appear to be more reflective of our community than our current employee composition. So we have a diverse group of applicants to draw from. And so these are all very encouraging things, I think, for us to keep in mind and to continue to consider as the city implements many of those strategies that Ami spoke about, that I think will continue to allow the city to encourage a workforce that is more reflective of the great diversity of the city of Sacramento.
Ms. Barnes, you want to answer that question as well?
Sure. It's a great question, and it's one that I ask all the time, and it's one that you, we have to continue to have a long-range strategy. I would agree with Jorge in terms of numbers, but I'm also pragmatic to see that, you know, there were some recommendations that were placed in the report that highlighted improvements around our data collection. So I take this data as indicators for us to ask critical questions of our systems. Our department assessments and annual reports, I think, will present an opportunity for, at least in my role, to have a deeper dive into departments in terms of practices, culture, understanding what are the norms around hiring, what are the norms around outreach, so that we could offer improvements, provide support, create tools, support the HR department in providing those tools. So I think that while the numbers definitely indicate a great trend towards reflecting the community, which is our workforce equity goal, I think we have a lot of work to do. I think we still need to dive deep.
I think we still need to dive deep and really interrogate, you know, our policies on procedures. I would, I'm almost thinking I should have added a seventh one is how can we lessen the lengthy policy development and approval for many of the things that we want to do to be inclusionary, such as, you know, ECAPS profile. We've been working for quite a long time to ensure that we could have staff present options of different identities, such as gender identity, nine, non-binary identity, sexual orientation. But we have to improve policies around these systems. So we're doing the work, it's just taking, you know, it takes a long time. But at the same time, it, it, it's good, but we could do better. And I think having that long-range strategy should keep us vigilant. It should keep us dedicated to building our capacity, supporting these system-wide endeavors, such as the classification and comp study, collecting data, the work that the Office of the Auditor is doing. It's giving us great data points to answer questions that maybe we wouldn't have thought to before and make connections that we need to make.
One follow-up, if there is one or two trends in this data that most concern you, what are they?
I think the downward trend for African Americans in terms of leaving and as well as not being reflected in the applicant pool for the, for those three years. I'm, I'm a little hesitant to count 2021 just because of the, the reasons that Jorge cited. You know, it's pandemic, there's a lot, we still don't know how it's going to impact our work, workforce trends. But in terms of, you know, 17 to 19, that, those are probably the most concerning. But what I will say in the flip side, where the jumps are. And also in that same vein, for the Hispanic and Latino community, there's also a big delta in understanding how, what we could do better there. That's a concern. And then a positive concern is what we're doing well in terms of gender. Why are we seeing an increase in our Asian population in terms of diversity of application? Is there a best practice we need to be replicating there? What's working, understanding that? So that, that would be the answer to my, to your question, Mayor.
Jorge, anything you want to add or is that same answer?
I think, I think that's one of the beautiful things of having a partnership with the City Manager's Office and with the Attorney's Office and with HR is that, you know, we've been working very closely together on analyzing this material. So we're of like mind.
Same page, thank you. All right, Councilmember Getta then Vang.
Good, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, first I want to thank Ami and Jorge for this. I think you guys mentioned it, this great partnership. Obviously, you know, the City Auditor's Office does its independent work, but then after the, the analysis is done, the immediate response from staff to, to look at what we can do is, has been critical. A couple of things, I, I think, you know, long story short, you know, from what we saw here, a lot of good things, but also a lot of concerning areas where we have a lot of work to do. You know, I, I, I would be remiss if I didn't call out the, the number of, the still the large delta amongst Latino and the API proportional to the city population. But again, the, the trend is in the positive direction, you know? So that is a good sign, you know? And it's going to take time for us as we do that. However, from what I looked at the data, we had a larger application pool of Latinos, but yet the numbers, the, the numbers were smaller in the hiring process. So I know, you know, this is only a small window of data that we're collecting. And so it's difficult to, to really get some causality of what's, what's happening here. But, you know, one would say that, you know, that if we have a larger applicant pool, we might see a better trend in that. So that, that's one area of concern. The other area that I have a much more concern recently, and also maybe it's a little highlighted because of the recent news articles that came out over the last week, is the separation rate amongst employees of color and particularly amongst African Americans. And there was an article of another African American firefighter who came out about leaving the department. Now that is one isolated case, but the data here shows that, that that seems to be a larger number, more than just one case. So, you know, what I'd like to find out is, how do we dig deeper into that data to, to see what, what is, if there are those trends that are occurring? Is our best practice is great, but more concerning, what is not working that's causing, you know, as we do this immense effort to diversify our city and make sure that our city reflects its population, that as we bring people into the city, that they don't leave immediately? So I'd like to make sure that we do that. So, Mr. Mayor, what I'll do is I'll move to accept the staff report and the City Auditor's report with these, with the City Manager's response, but also provide direction that, that either we get an outside consultant or someone, I'll leave that up to the City Manager, to dig deeper into the separation of, and either through exit interviews of why employees are leaving. I, again, I'd be, it, it would be just a shame if we do this effort to increase our applicant pools, but people leave because they, for whatever reason. So I'm not going to speculate on why they are, but I, I want to make sure that, that we address that part. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, great work, thank you to everyone. Big kudos to Yipsey and Public Works. I mean, that, that seems to show that they've done a tremendous amount of work in diversifying their, their departments as well.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. Just have some questions and comments. First, Jorge, thank you so much for your presentation. And Ami, thanks for coming with the full package of what's underway and the work that we still have ahead. I really appreciate the report, had a chance to look at it and want to say some of the trends are looking really great. But I think we've heard from a few of my colleagues and even from our staff that presented today that we still have so much work to ensure that we actually have a workforce that reflects the diversity of our community. And so I, one, want to say thank you to Ami for the undertaking of really doing the internal work in, in the city and really thanking Jorge for the report and highlighting some of the work that is needed. I wanted to ask, you know, I think we saw, Ami kind of pointed out some of the concerns, because the mayor, you did ask, you know, what are some things that popped out? I think also seeing the decrease in African American application pools and the separation was a concern for me. And I wanted to know, and this question is actually directed to legal, you know, just given the limitation of Prop 209, I want to know what tools and strategies do we have as a city to, to change these outcomes? And I think a big part of that, I see Ami doing, you know, sharing some of the work regarding the continuum in terms of outreach and retention. But wanted some clarity just from our legal office about, you know, just given the limitation of Prop 209, what, what, what kind of tools and strategies can we employ?
Yes, Councilmember Vang, we've been actually working with Ami and HR and the City Manager's Office for the very purpose, since 209 does prohibit the city from setting any quotas. But many of the, many of the endeavors that you're hearing Ami speak about today, and certainly that the City Auditor is, is also consulting with City Managers, are exactly the types of efforts that the city can take.
Thanks, yeah, I asked that question in particular because I know we see that a lot across a lot of different governments. And I do think that as we're, you know, recruiting for positions, and I know that we can't do quotas, but I think there are opportunities for us to do outreach in a way, whether that's geographic by zip code, right? Because while we can't do quota by racial, by, by race, given Prop 209, I think we can also do a more targeted, like geographic zip code. And, and so really making sure that staff think through that process a little bit too, because I think that there are some ways for us to do that. The other question that I had was, you know, as I was looking at the data, I had questions regarding sexual orientation and gender minorities and noticed that we didn't have any data on that. And so wanted to ask staff, are we currently collecting data on sexual orientation and gender identity? Because I think it's, you know, having that data available is really important for us if we are to improve the quality and the effectiveness of our public policies. And so wanted to know, are we collecting that data? And what work is going under? If we're not doing that, what work is underway to ensure that we can collect that data?
I think I could speak to that and Jorge may be able to, to add on as well. I do want to piggyback on your first question too, a little bit. The City Attorney's Office has been really great in guiding around benchmarks, quotas, what we can say, what we can do. And I would really draw the council's attention to the performance measures and the community indicators in the Race, Gender and Equity Action Plan. They were deliberately intended to not be that so that we could provide a measure of progress and also guidance to the staff of specific ways that they can measure their progress. So this could be the number of job fairs. This could be the number of brochures in different languages. This could be, you know, how many staff outreach specialists have you created or have made part of a particular role or function? So it's, it comes into numbers, but through a very specific strategy because we have to avoid the benchmarks and the quotas and so forth. So I would use that as a guy, I would share that as a guide. One of the things, again, in the previous council and particularly Councilmember Steve Hansen and Councilmember Ashby as well, lifted up orientation around this, this, well, this similar report with the, the Workforce and Diversity Audit that is led by Jorge and his team. That work is beginning and is underway. I mentioned briefly in the presentation about approval of policies and lengthy consultation that we must undergo as a city. Right now, there's two key policies that are needing to happen before we can implement a improved or enhanced ECAPS profile that is inclusive of non-binary gender, gender identity, sexual orientation. And we actually, IT, got to give a shout out to IT. They are, it's actually there as a prototype, ready to be launched with the disclaimer, we just need to have our two key policies around personnel records and privacy be solidified and approved and then develop a communication strategy. We don't know if that would be in time for the July 1st Workforce Diversity and Salary Trend Report, more than likely the next one, but it is in the works. So I hope that gives you some idea around our ECAPS profile and that serves as a primary data source for our workforce data collection efforts.
What I would add to that. If I may, Jorge, Lainey Millstein, Assistant City Manager, one of our goals in capturing the data was working with IT, HR and all of the folks who were responsible for finalizing policies so that we could have it done when we're ready for the next open enrollment, because that's the time when most employees touch our system. All of this remains voluntary, with the exception of the data that we need on gender for EEO reporting, but we're hoping that we can have the policies aligned so that we can have that and have a robust communication campaign around our, our next open enrollment so that we can start to capture that data. That would be the ideal for us.
Thanks, Lainey, and thanks, Ami. Jorge, were you gonna add?
I was just going to add one thing. I think Ami alluded to this before. It is an area where we've recognized that there is a need for additional information. And given that we hadn't been capturing it, one of the efforts that Ami's office and our office undertook was to conduct an employee survey, which was one of our stronger efforts to start to capture that type of information and to begin to document, you know, what, what, what proportions of our employee groups consist of these different groups. And, and so that we can begin to make headway and establish kind of a, a foundation for how we begin to look at this information and analyze it going forward. And then just in regards to your questions regarding some of the limitations that we might have in trying to encourage workforce that is more reflective of our community, I just wanted to mention that Chapter One does have about a page and a half listing that our Attorney's Office helped us put together that has some information regarding what those limitations are and what we can and cannot do.
Thanks, I really appreciate that. And really great to hear the, the work that's underway to begin to collect that data. I, I just have one more comment and really a direction to Councilmember Getta's motion as well. On one of the slides, Ami, I think it was recommendation number three, I just took notes on it really quick. And, and this just falls on the council. Recommendation number three was that Mayor Council, in terms of capacity building and training, just for the Mayor Council in particular, I think that, you know, all of us, all nine of us bring a different perspective, right? But we all have blind spots. And as staff is working internally on the racial equity work, I think it's also really important as a council for us to own this and do our own training. And Mayor, I like to actually make a request, and I think for us to move forward on a recommendation that staff actually recommended for the council, is for us to actually have a workshop, I don't know in terms of Brown Act, whatnot, but I think that there needs to be an application just from a governance, on a governance level, shared definitions around equity, right? And, and what does that look like? And I don't think, even as a council, we have perhaps even a shared definition. And I think one of the recommendations that staff put in front of us is that Mayor Council also has to build capacity and training for that. Just because we're elected officials doesn't make us any smarter. We all have blind spots. And so I, I think in addition to the, the motion that Councilmember Getta made, I actually like to provide direction for this council to, to meet specifically on this. And what does a work plan look like for us as a council, as a governing body? Because the work can happen underway. Ami could be doing this work with staff and training staff, but as a council, if we're not on the same page, I'm worried that there could be that disconnect. And staff even put that recommendation. So I think we should move forward on that. And if that's a workshop, a working plan so that we are holding ourselves accountable as elected officials to ensure that we have the same shared understanding and even some basic policy that we can move right now to implement safeguards and remove barriers to any of the work that staff is doing. And so that would be my direction. I don't know, Ami, if you have any comments on that, given that you have done a lot of work, but I know this is a governance piece, but you know, any insight that you can provide would be really great too.
I say yes, yes, and triple exclamation point yes. I would love to help provide support for that endeavor. I know there's challenges. There are city councils all over the country that are undergoing EDI and racial equity training and capacity building. And I, I have no doubt that we could support you in that endeavor. And I'd also like to lift up, you know, this, this, these recommendations or action steps were to, what we could do immediately is low, kind of low-hanging fruit. And I know Councilmember Gary, you also mentioned about the, the manual. That possibly could be something that could be, you know, law and ledge that, you know, that would have a kind of procedural policy around so that that indicates to the staff, the managers and supervisors, that these are the expectations around our hiring and recruitment. So kind of wanted to lift that up, but would love that endeavor. I think it would solidify, I think it would, it'd be very meaningful for the staff to see the council under, you know, undertake this work in your own way and, and create that symmetry. And many of our staff see the council as the leadership in addition to the City Manager's Office. So I think it would only be powerful in accelerating our transformation around workplace inclusion and what is expected for all of us at the city around EDI and racial equity work. And there's a lot of tools as a member of GARE. We have access to trainings. We are about to train staff and begin in September racial equity training for all of the department equity teams. Big believer in building the capacity that we have and growing it, a train-the-trainer model. And so I think that that could easily lend into that and we can support that endeavor of the council. So, thank you.
Mayor, you're on mute.
Thank you, I think Councilmember Vang's suggestion is really important. But I want to make no but to that. I just want to make sure that we are thoughtful about how we put together the workshop or the meeting because it would, it's valuable in and of itself for each member to do the GARE training. I know I've done some of it, I know others have as well, but I don't think that's what you're talking about. It's actually us meeting together in, in a facilitated way to ask and answer some of the key questions, right? I mean, to make it, to make it really focused, right? Like this issue that we keep talking about where we have absolutely the right intent about a racial and gender equity lens for every major decision that we make. And I know that's in the works. I know Councilmember Vang, you are helping lead the charge on that. Boy, I would sure love to have some quality time together in public session where we are really talking about what that looks like. And, and, you know, because it, it's one piece of several as we're going through Earth's presentations. I think a focused workshop, either onsite or offsite, where, you know, presentations, I think a focused workshop, either onsite or offsite, where, you know, there are the three key questions that we that we need to grapple with. And in the process, we are educating each other um as well about, as you say, some of our 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 blind spots. So let's let's work on this, okay? Together? Thank you. All right. Sean, uh, council member Laloie, you get the last word on this item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, Ami, thank you so much. Jorge, thank you. Um, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you two in person, but definitely looking forward to it. Um, my my question right now is based on this study that has been done by your office, Jorge, and Ami, you have reviewed it, is that um, i- is the city uh providing, is there equal opportunity for the jobs available? Um, is that what the city is providing right now? Equal job opportunity?
I would say yes. I would say absolutely yes. Are our systems and our um knowledge and skills uh needing improvement to uh fulfill that? Absolutely. I think that's any organization. But absolutely, I think that there are many departments that are doing, uh, that's one of the the things I'm excited about getting our department assessments is to learn about what departments are doing in real time around their hiring and their recruitment and the strategy that they um that they do and the ideas that they have. Because each of our fourteen departments are very different and they face very different uh uh jobs, uh segmentation, occupational uh uh requirements, um, technical requirements. And so looking at each of our departments in a holistic way, instead of kind of a one-size-fits-all, I think will help us uh do that. Um, but as an organization, yes, I think we are, um, if you mean in the compliance sense, an EEO, absolutely. I want us to move, and that's the work that we're trying to do as as part of the city manager's office and my office and your, and the work is affirming the racial equity initiatives. We need to move past compliance. We need to move beyond services. We need to be transformative. And I think uh I'm kind of leading your question a little bit, but that's where I think we are, we tend to be more symbolic and uh transactional, and we need to be more um uh transformative.
So.
I just make sure I understand it. So I'm I'm, first of all, um, council member Vang, if there is a workshop that you're gonna be um putting together with the assistant of the 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 city manager's staff and what have you, I definitely want to be part of that. But my my question is, right now, we we're gonna try to focus and put all of our power to make sure that there is equal opportunity provided. Correct? Or are we working towards an uh an equal outcome?
So, I'm not sure what you're, I don't mean to interrupt, but I I just, I don't wanna, what what you're asking, you're asking, I think, sort of a philosophical question. Uh, equal opportunity is the baseline, but it's the floor, not the, not not the ceiling. I I think the city, I think it is fair to say, I'm not speaking for Ms. Barnes or any of us, I speak for myself as mayor. We are aspiring for more than equal opportunity. We're aspiring for equity. We're we're aspiring to reach even higher, to make up for not only past discrimination, but for the continuing inequities that exist in our data here. And so how we do that is what the issue is. Because um Prop 209 prohibits um quotas. Of course, people need to be judged when it comes to job applications on their merits. We always want to choose the person who i- is highly qualified, best qualified, but it matters. First of all, qualifications can be subjective. And secondly, we want to make sure that we have a city and a city workforce that reflects the true diversity of our community. So it is more than equal opportunity. I'm sorry to, if I took anybody's words, but I just want to sum it as a- a- as the mayor here, it is more than just a level playing field. It is striving to try to include people and communities that have been traditionally left out.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and a hundred percent in agreement. Thank you.
Okay. Go, go. I I got one more thing, and I'm sorry, but it's been on my mind for a while, and it is something I've, but I just gotta raise it. It it came up when I met with some of the um employee groups. When I used to work in state government, it always troubled me that the state departments, that their offices of civil rights were actually arms of the uh of the department themselves and their human relations department. And the people were good people. It wasn't about the people, it was about the structure. And so the employee who had a concern about a violation of civil rights or or e- e- employment issues would go to the office of civil rights within the department. And it would be, again, an arm of the management. And sometimes the the there would be questions of of bias or at least misunderstanding about what that office was. Here in the city, as I understand it, our EEO office is part of our um human resources agency. And again, I think we've got a great director, great people. It's not about the people, it's about the structure. Um, i- is that something that we should look at? Um, I I I've heard it, and again, based upon my old experience, I do think it is something that we should look at, just as Mr. Osaguetta is the independent auditor. When it comes to EEO, shouldn't we have an office that is outside of of the the management of the city? Where?
I welcome that as part of the motion, because I I completely agree with you, and I've heard that from um from numerous employees.
Okay, I don't want to, I'm not absolutely judging it now, because that's not fair. You know, Howard and I, for example, haven't had a chance to really talk about it, but I do want to raise it for, you know, as a report back and further conversation. And again, it's not about the people. Uh, the city manager and I always have a conversation about, well, what if we weren't in these positions, right? What would be the, wha- 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 what what is the the potential negative of of a particular structure? Um, so I I I would just ask, it doesn't have to be part of the motion respectfully, thank you. I just would ask this be part of uh the 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 discussion at some point coming back uh around how our EEO function is set up. Howard, you want to say anything?
Yeah, I I'm happy to report back on uh the implications of doing something like that, so the council can have a broader discussion about whether they want to pursue it or not.
Okay. And so I think you.
I'd like to add one thing to the item that's uh that's being heard right now. I'd like to suggest that maybe as we go forward in pulling together this workshop to talk about this uh development of an equity lens and the work that we're talking about here, that maybe I work with you, Mr. Mayor, to uh have um, you know, select a uh an ad hoc uh or subcommittee of this council to help craft that workshop.
Hey, hey, I got a, I got a couple of people in mind already.
I do, too.
And we'll do it off, we'll do it offline. Very good.
And Mayor, if if I may add, um, just in line with what you were just mentioning, uh, you know, the council approved an audit of the complaint resolution process for our office. And if you'd like, we can explore what other cities are doing in regards to your concept and in that endeavor. It just included as part of that scope.
EEO function, we we obviously just structurally want that to have independence, I think.
We could do some research to see what others are doing and if others have structured it that way and include that in the report.
It's part part of our um work to um continue to make a more perfect city.
Sure.
Okay. Um, very good. Let's let's take a vote on the item, please.
Um, I have a motion by council member Getta, but I don't believe I have a second.
Second, go, go.
So, um, second by council member Vang. Um, council member Laloie.
Aye.
Council member Harris.
Aye.
Council member Valenzuela.
Yes.
Council member Getta.
Aye.
Council member Jennings.
Aye.
Council member Vang.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Ashby and Vice Commissioner are absent. Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Thank you. That passes seven to nothing. We have one more item today. Um, and that is the approval of the salary for the director of OPSA, which um I'll turn it over to Ms. Banks Robinson. Go ahead.
Yes, as you know, you all met in closed session in May regarding this position, and you voted to provide an increase to this position as shown in the report. And we're just seeking your approval to approve that salary.
All right, thank you. Um, I I just want to say I support this um strongly based on several things. Number one, the experience that Dr. Watson brings to this city from her prior uh work across the country. And secondly, the scope of this position has expanded pretty significantly since um the uh the last occupant held it, including the inspector general and, of course, all sorts of external events that have uh raised the 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 profile of this important office even more. So I would urge and I vote on this item. Is there public testimony?
I have no callers on this item.
Thank you. I take a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Council member Laloie.
Um, ca- councilman Laloie, go ahead. And Valenzuela, I'm sorry. Don't know, we 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 weren't, we weren't cutting you off here, I'm sorry.
We're going too quickly, it's okay. I got you, I appreciate that. Um, no, I just wanted to say also, just recognizing the role of the plane and just really the updates on the truth and reconciliation process that was initiated. I mean, that is huge, and that's not something that many cities have done, and that's something I'm really proud that we're embarking on in the city of Sacramento. So really looking forward to working with Dr. Watson on that, and just wanted to commend her for what she's doing on that so far.
Agreed, totally. Uh, councilman Laloie, were you up?
Uh, the Madam Clerk was taking a roll, and I.
Oh, I'm sorry, I I thought you wanted to uh opine on this item, but let's go ahead, let's call the roll.
Thank you, council member Laloie.
Aye.
Council member Harris.
Aye.
Council member Valenzuela.
Yeah.
Council member Getta.
Aye.
Council member Jennings.
Aye.
Council member Vang.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Ashby and Vice Commissioner are absent. Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, that passes seven to nothing. Thank you very much. That concludes the agenda uh for this afternoon is, are there, um, is there public testimony and items not on the agenda?
Yes, I have three callers.
Okay, let's hear from the callers.
May I have the first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting, caller, you have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, council and mayor. I appreciate the conversation about equity. Whereas equal opportunity might look at putting an application in a common location and telling the entire city where it is. Equity would look like putting that same application throughout the city and every district and at neighborhood places where people would trust. I also hope that you can show that spirit of equity in um your contracts and grant proposals. For example, the gang violence proposal. Not only was it um quickly um taken care of, but also it would be nice if many of the applicants were told what exactly the the city decided on and why. That would also be equity, because it would be educating a a group so that they can do um more and and know which direction to move in next time. I hope that you've um listened to the advice given in respect. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, yeah, uh, this is my first time ever calling in. My name's Wes, I'm from District Two. Uh, I know this wasn't on the agenda for this week, I think it was a previous, I read it in the news about you guys voting eight to one to uh try to stop Mr. Henry from having access to city council, and I just thought that was so laughable. He's one of the nicest guys ever, the activist community knows that. And honestly, the eight people that voted that way, he deserves an apology from every single one of them. So as far as I saw saw in the article, I read everything, I know the guy personally, that that was just laughable, the decision. But that's just my opinion as a citizen of Sacramento, and I want my voice to be heard on that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Set out?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any more callers. We're attempting to call the first caller. I'm, I believe we have the first caller back online, just one moment.
Okay, go, go.
Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, yes, this is uh Lambert Davis Jr. of uh To The Bay and Back Cheesecake, shout out to Del Paso Heights, uh, because they're tremendous supporters of what I'm fighting for. Uh, tonight, I I heard some very actually confirming and also disturbing comments. Uh, number one, I was not allowed to get into the queue for number fifty-seven. And I I I'm, I hope that wasn't intentional, but I wasn't able to get in, so I'm gonna get right to it. First of all, I want to thank city councilwoman Vang for mentioning about black uh people and the the uh discrimination. It takes a lot of courage to do that, and a lot of black people voted for her as well. Uh, in terms of, I heard the proposition 209 mentioned tonight, and um, to me, that proposition does not apply to my situation. My paperwork was altered and sabotaged, 209 does not protect the city from that practice. And that was in two thousand eighteen. And I was never notified why I was eliminated before I got to the pitchet stage. And in terms of uh my proposal I submitted, I never had been told why it's not been funded or or acknowledged. So you can use 209 with everybody but me, but that doesn't apply to me. And in terms of graphs, as a person who graduated from a university before the internet, graphs can be skewed. And I I also heard somebody keep saying black and African American, what's the difference? I know the difference, but what's the difference? You have a tremendous problem down here in City Hall, and the millennials and a lot of people in Del Paso Heights, they're very proud of me because it takes a lot of courage to do what I do and a lot of time. And I hope that everybody has to start coming back to the council.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, I hope the the city council starts opening up, because I see Minty and the other lady, where are the rest of the people?
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
All right, members, thank you. Um, are there council ideas and questions before we recess for two weeks? We'll invite uh all of you, of course, tomorrow morning to uh the State of the City address.
Yeah, Mayor, um, I do have a a question. Uh, so first, I'd like to wish you well for your State of the City address. I have a feeling you're gonna do extremely well. So I I just want to uh give you a little support, and I look forward to hearing what you have to say about the state of our fair city.
Thank you.
Uh, Mindy, I I have a question for you. You know, we've kind of struggled a bit with the schedule of council meetings over the last year. Of course, it's been pretty crazy, and you certainly had a heck of a workload with the online meetings and so forth. But I know that you're looking at the process and procedures. You know, we've had a couple of meetings that went many, many hours, because we had two meetings in the same day. We also had Law and Ledge. Uh, sometimes we have other meetings as well. I was just wondering if you would come back with a a report to tell us what your ideas are as you're formulating your game plan, you know, for the next year as we move forward with how we organize our meetings.
Absolutely, I would be happy to do so. Um, do you want that for the upcoming year, or do we want to look at amending this year's calendar?
Well, I I am certainly ready to amend it. Uh, you know, I, to tell you the truth, when we had a meeting weekly, I I thought that our agendas were a little more level, uh, that we handled our business in a, you know, just kind of a more even manner. So I I'd be certainly willing to look at that, at least have a discussion with my council colleagues about whether or not we want to alter the schedule.
Thank you, I'd be happy to prepare that report.
Part of the pro- part of the problem is we're pushing real hard on a lot of fronts, and that's a good thing, right? And it just, it it, you're, we're trying to jam a lot, um, you know, within a month. And I think when you look at it, it'd be interesting to go back and look at the. And I think when you look at it, it'd be interesting to go back and look at the history of the, over 2021. I don't know that we've had many Tuesdays without a meeting. I think we've had a couple. But it's, we've been going, you know, pretty hard, because there's that much going on in the city. But let's look at it, Jeff, I think it's fine. Let's look at it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree with you, Mayor. We've been very energetic, but I've noticed on, you know, the, the weeks that we do skip a Tuesday, boy, do we get jammed up the next week.
Yeah, I've always, always said that very little good happens after 10 o'clock at night, you know? In session.
There you go. Fair, well said.
Okay.
Put that in your speech tomorrow.
Yeah, exactly, that's in there. Okay. Anybody else? Members?
Hey, Mayor?
Yes.
Just to add on to Jeff's comments, um, maybe you can speak to what you spoke to earlier today, for those who came in late on the schedule going forward, uh, the hybrid schedule, and may either yourself or our city clerk can speak to it to let the public know what they can expect moving forward.
Yeah, maybe, Madam Clerk, I know you did put out a memo, and we've discussed this with the city manager as well, about returning to the chambers, what, maybe you can share what, or at least our tentative thoughts are on that.
Thank you, I'd be happy to share with the public. So after recess, so our first meeting back in July, the end of July, um, we, the council members will be welcomed back into the chambers. We will still have a hybrid platform using Zoom, um, and members of the public will no longer use a phone-in system, but they will be able to dial in, um, either, um, online or by phone into the Zoom, so they will act as, um, attendees in our Zoom, so there won't be a delay, um, in, um, in listening to the meeting online, um, and make, being able to make comments. So we'll do that for city council, and then we're also doing the sim, the same thing for all our boards and commissions.
Is there any timeline as far as, um, moving back to, uh, having not only city council members and commissioners in the chamber, but also having the public in the chamber?
So I will be looking to the council members, um, when we return in July for direction on, on that.
I think something we need to, we need to discuss, um, certainly as large indoor gatherings take place, including, you know, religious services and all that, I mean, I think we should soon, soon transition to allowing, uh, members of the public to come into the council chambers. I think we just want to, just watch and be observant over these next couple of weeks, even during the recess, and maybe start, you know, the first week and with the hybrid form that the city clerk just described. But I, I'd like to get to regular order here with the public, um, welcoming the chambers as soon as possible.
So my, my only suggestion to that, Mayor, is that I, I agree with the caution of making sure that everybody's safe, but I also think we can allow certain number of people in the chambers, and they can be spaced properly, uh, with all the, um, provisions that we have for masks and, and washing of hands and temperature checking and all those things. So I do know we can have some people in the chambers, not the full chamber, but at some point in time, we should be able to gradually move to adding some people to the chambers until we feel comfortable with larger amounts.
Right, well, let, let us have that discussion, if you don't mind, you know, over the next days, as we prepare to come back on July, what, what is the first date? The 20-
The July 20th. Correct, the July 20th meeting will be your first one back.
July 20th, okay?
And for the public's view, for the public's point of view, we're on recess for the first two weeks of July.
Well, we are, we, they call it a district holiday, right? Back in their districts, uh, hopefully everyone gets some time. I, I really do, I encourage everybody to take some time, because, um, everybody on this council and the city staff and the city team going really, really hard, and I think, frankly, we are more effective, um, if we get a little rest once in a while, too. But I'm sure we'll all be busy out in the city doing lots of events and doing lots of things as well. So, um, stay safe, have a good break, everybody. If there's nothing else to come before the city council, we are adjourned. Thank you.